Okay. Good afternoon. We will begin our workshop. Today is Monday, May 24th, 2021. It is 1:00 PM. Today in our workshop, the purpose of that would be the agenda review of the May 25th, 2021 regular board meeting. Our board self-evaluation, the board liaisons, board presentation for, or I'm sorry, board procedures, manuals, Robert's Rules of Order, and good of the order. Dr. Atkins and his team will be here through the agenda review, which then afterwards they will leave the room, and we appreciate you all being here. And then we will continue on with our board evaluations. Dr. Atkins, I'm going to go ahead and let you start, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The first question that I have is item G1, approval to renew the ITN for branding. And this question is, please provide the rationale for a $175,000 contract with Priority Marketing when we have a professional communications department. Please provide examples of tasks, projects completed by Priority Marketing in the past year, including a copy of the recent press release regarding our search for an interim superintendent, and what service do they provide that cannot be completed in-house? I know that we have, I believe, two people to respond, Dr. Pruitt and Irma Lancaster.
Okay, and then I'm going to give Ms. Vaughn just a moment, because I know this is her question.
Yeah.
Highness Lancaster.
Good afternoon. To respond directly to the question made regarding communications department, to date, we have spent $88,000 up until the end of April for services rendered by Priority Marketing. The top three services that we have used in communications has been media monitoring, ADA compliance, and graphic design. The reason that we consult with Priority Marketing to test these services is because media monitoring and ADA compliance, for example, are things that require a software monitoring system. So whether we use them or another company, we would still be paying for that service. As far as the reason we use them for graphic design, while we do have some staff in-house that is capable of doing graphic design, the amount of graphic design that's produced for the district is quite large. Some of the larger projects that we've, that they've worked on for us are the Code of Conduct, which, as you know, is about 85 pages. And they, while we work with them on the content and the design development, they are the ones that put the document together in English, Spanish, Creole, as well as converting all of those documents into ADA compliant, which is something that we have now been doing since the beginning of this current fiscal year. Another one of the large projects, as you know, was the reopening toolkit, which up until December was constantly having changes done to the document, which also had to be done in all three languages and converted to ADA compliant every time that we made a change.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Good afternoon. The HR portion is $40,000 total year spend. It's a monthly retainer that we pay, and it's all, they monitor and do all of our social media accounts, they do targeted marketing when we go in for our recruitment trips, they produce all of our brochures and all of our materials for recruitment purposes, and so for that spend, it's less expensive than hiring a staff member to do that work. So that's the HR portion.
Okay. Just a couple of things to clarify. Ms. Lancaster, you mentioned the different languages. Are they providing the translation services, or is that something that we have a different contract with another group?
We do the translations first into Spanish and Creole, so we provide them with all the content. However, putting it down onto, into the document is what takes time.
Okay, so we, I didn't realize we had, we have an in-house Haitian Creole translator?
Not an official Haitian Creole translator, it's more of a, hey, you know Haitian Creole, can you translate this for us?
Okay. Can you be more specific on the media monitoring? I'm guessing is part of what Rob Spicker puts out?
Yes, so what you receive on a daily basis is what's available online, so that is very easy for anyone to do a search on. However, the media monitoring that is conducted by Priority is what we may miss during a newscast, so there could be a story that airs several times during the evening that's presented a little differently, but only one version will be posted online. So, for example, if someone is live on scene, they may interview someone on location, hey, what do you think of this topic? They might answer that question, but that may not be what's posted online at a later time. So we'd just like to make sure we have every single clip that's associated with the district or the schools.
Okay, and does media monitoring also include kind of looking at school board and other employee staff Facebook and Instagram and all of that accounts? Because that's happened.
No, it does not.
So that's somebody else that would be, it's not Priority Marketing, it's somebody in-house that would be doing something like that?
I'm not aware of anyone in-house professionally doing that. However, of course, anyone can go online and do their own research, but there is no one that's contracted, at least through communications, to do any sort of monitoring of employees on social media.
Okay, and the reason that I ask is I know for a fact that it has been done to certain people where it's been brought up. Anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that. And I was curious to see, and I haven't looked online, exactly what the press release looked like for our super, our interim superintendent search?
That is not something that we worked with Priority Marketing on, that was strictly done with, through HR, and I believe Suzette was the direct contact for them.
So do we have a copy of it? Because we have another thing that we talked about, another piece that we talked about in this morning's meeting, that we're going to be asking Priority Marketing to put out a, an advertisement that we're looking for national search firms. So I know it was one of the things that, it must have been through HR, because I think Suzette Rivera was taking care of that, but I wanted to see what was produced. So do we not have that anywhere?
Certainly provide you with a copy of that, well, to the entire board with a copy of that, and I'm sure Ms. Rivera will connect with you to make any adjustments that are necessary.
Okay, because I didn't, you know, there are other press releases that sometimes Mr. Spicker puts out, and I would have thought that we would have seen a copy of that sent through communications, maybe Rob Spicker on that, and I just want to, since, you know, all of us here on the dais are a part of it, I would like to see what it is they're doing, because it, we were told it was through their contract that it wouldn't be, wouldn't cost us anything additional to have that. And I'm just curious to see, what is their nationwide network when we ask for it to go out nationwide, and what is it exactly that they put out there? And I'm seeing one person kind of nodding, so.
Yeah.
Does anybody have that? Anybody in HR or?
I don't.
We can, we can request that information from Priority Marketing. The reason you didn't see the press release from our department is because it was not requested to be put out through communications, it was requested to be put out through Priority Marketing, so we did not put that out. And we can get you the information from them.
I just want to, you know, I just, it sounds like they're doing some things that would be difficult to do in-house, but you've heard me speak before on, we have a lot of talent in this school district, and if you say that it, you know, it's believable that if you say, you know, this amount of money, it's cheaper to do Priority Marketing than to use our experts in-house, I'll believe that, but I would like to see that we're getting what we pay for, and so, I know I would appreciate it, and perhaps some of my board colleagues would appreciate seeing what was done. So, thanks, appreciate it.
Your comments, I agree, like, the entire district, but I, you know, of course, I'm always excited to share about the communications team, they are very talented, but we don't have enough bandwidth, so we're glad that we're able to continue the relationship with Priority Marketing to provide this additional support.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lancaster, do you under, because I'm kind of confused, could you please, do you understand what she's asking for?
Yes.
What she's requesting?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you did.
Didn't this contract used to be a lot higher?
Yes, actually, I believe, I know when I started, it was about $300,000, so this, what we are currently asking for is 175,000. That encompasses not just communications, but human resources, food and nutrition services, and school support, again, as needed. So those are what I presented were some of the main things that Priority Marketing does for us, however, they are able to fill in in areas here and there that we're unable to do, especially during this time when a lot of the staff is tied up during all these meetings, they can be able to provide us with things we can't complete before deadlines that are available.
And the reason why, Madam, the reason why I asked is because one of the frequent criticisms I receive is that we don't do a good enough job telling our story, and I understand, Ms. Lancaster, that your bandwidth is very limited. I'd actually, I mean, if we weren't a public education system, I'd like to see us putting a ton more money into marketing so that we can more positively tell our story and reach more people, but the criticism is that we're spending money on PR, and why are we doing that, we're in education, so it's a catch-22. I'm really surprised that it's as low as it is, the work that you do is fantastic. I told Ms., I told Ms. Stillwell after State of the Schools that you put a lump in my throat again with the coverage, but again, your bandwidth is limited, you can't, you can't be at the Fort Myers Girls softball team when they went on a walk-off walk, you know, like, you can't be everywhere, so I'd actually like to see us spend more money here.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Ms. Kittens?
The thing, when this comes up each time, the thing that gives me angst is the word branding, because I know we spent a lot of money previously on branding and the orange and the yellow and, you know, changing all of that around. And the comments that I've gotten from people about this is, how many times do you brand? So perhaps it's the way it's presented, and also, you know, like Ms. Vaughn was saying, if we could see some of the things that, you know, are included in this, but then also, 175,000 is the cap, correct?
Correct, so we can spend up to that amount, however, we pay as work is completed.
So, and the 88,000 is what we did in the previous year, and it's just this last year up until now?
Correct.
Okay, and there was mention in there about what was spent for schools, that if they're doing flyers or whatever, do they pay for that, or is it all inclusive? And what, if they pay for it, what budget does it come out?
Yes, so schools have access to this ITN as well, and it comes out of their school budget, so they can work with Priority on design and layout and all that, and I believe that Gateway, Nikita did that with Gateway and opening Gateway this year, and then other schools have used it in the past. Lambs was another one a couple of years ago that, that used them, so we've had schools using them throughout the ITN.
Okay, so this is where I'm confused. So we're paying them up to 175,000, but if a school wants to use them, they still pay for their services?
That's included.
And it comes out of their school budget?
It comes out of their school budget, but it's included in the 175, so the max that we can spend as an entire district schools included is 175, so we then have to parse that out, so if a school wants to use them, then that comes out of the 175, but it's the school budget that pays for it.
So is there a limit, like, you may have one school that just loves to advertise, and, you know, so do you kind of cut them off?
We haven't, we haven't run into that, we haven't run into that as an issue, so we haven't had to cut anybody off.
Okay, and I, another thing I'll throw out there, because it's way outside the box, but I had noticed in other, some other districts that have IT and digital design and all that, and since we have one of the premier digital design schools in Dunbar, that somehow or another partnering, partnering with the schools to do some of this innovative stuff, and that way it could provide some job training for students and maybe some funding for the schools and the program to enhance the program, but I really would like to put that out there for us to think about it, that if we paid half the amount to an outside company and we use our schools and some of the digital, because the kids are brilliant, and they come up with things that will attract the group that we're looking for, and they're in it right now, so I would like to just put that out for you to think about.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn? Yeah, and I just wanted to remind everybody that one of the important reasons that the budget from Priority Marketing has gone down is that it's been, what, two and a half, three years ago, when we did this rebranding and tweaking to this district logo and adopting the colors and the templates and all of that. So I'm going to assume that, because I know we have templates for nearly everything having to do with our district, that that is a huge reason why it was logical that the budget would come way down. Is that correct?
That is partially correct, yes, and to your point, Ms. Kittens, maybe we could look into naming it something different, because we, there is currently some branding still going on, because every once in a while, we do find, oh, this is a new document that we haven't branded yet, but for the larger ones, such as the Code of Conduct, last year was the first time that we branded it with a new look, which was an extensive project, so this fiscal year will continue to be a long project because of the length, but it won't have to be redesigned.
And I just want to say thank you, and branding to me is essential, because people look at that, they know it, they don't even have to read it, they know who you are, so I really think that that is really important for any business, so, or education system, so thank you for that.
Correct, you get it, that's branding.
Okay, Dr. Atkins?
All right, I believe that's all the questions that we have, are there any others?
Yeah, Ms. Kittens?
I do have a couple, and I was remiss in sending it, because I was knee-deep in applications, no excuses, but I do have a couple. One is, and thank you for allowing me to do this, I5, and it's talking about financial auditing services. Is this for, this is different from the board auditing, or who is this for, just a quick explanation?
All right, let me get to the agenda.
All right.
It's the annual audit. Dr. Desmore's coming.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yep. Okay. Yeah, it's the approval to renew the RFP for financial auditing services awarded to MSL, PA, Moore, Lovelace, CPAs and advisors.
Okay, so this will be, good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and members of the board, this would deal with the district-wide audit, so every, every third year, the Auditor General's office will come and audit the district, right, the district's financial report or the AFR, and that's from the state every, every three years. On those off-two years, then the district is responsible for hiring its own auditor, and MSL is the one that we hire, or at least that is on contract at this point, to come in and do the district's annual financial audit for the proceeding, for the next two years.
Okay.
So that's that one.
I knew that.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. And, yeah, I have a couple more, but along with that, and this may be.
Dr. Desmore, is that for Dr. Desmore you need?
No, this is for the board, actually, when I saw the part about audit, I'm still wondering what's happening with our audit committee and advisory board, and it's going quite a bit of time and we haven't done it, so I'm just throwing that out. My next question is on L1, and on the bell times, and Dr. Atkins, I don't know if you or Dr. Sparrow can answer this, I thought we had a few schools that are currently doing the sample early start and late finish, adding that 15 minutes in the beginning and at the end, I believe, is, how does this schedule address that? And it was a sample, I thought, was with a few schools, so have we decided to adopt it? Hello, Mr. Lloyd?
Hello, Ms. Kittens. Right now, we have two middle schools, Harns Marsh Middle and Lehigh Middle, and throughout this year, I think it was around January, we did change their times, so they are going right now 9:30 to 4:15. We were able to do that this year because we have not transported all of our kids, so we actually went through, Mr. McKenney out in the East Zone, went through all the routes to make sure that we could actually do what we said we could do. This year, it was easy, next year, with the anticipation of all the students coming back and being on the buses, we really can't support the earlier start time. So what's academic services now working through in the middle school times, the additional time actually helps us, that's not an issue, but you would be looking at the 9:45 start time going to 4:30, but at this time, nothing is definitive, so the bell times you see there would be reverting back to the start of last year, the 9:45 to 4 o'clock for the middle schools.
So there's nothing really different in this one from the start of last?
No, not, not to the start, now that could change, I understand they're still looking at it and trying to get the additional instructional time that the students need, but for transportation purposes, we would not be able to support that earlier than 9:45.
And I just want to say hats off to you guys, and, where they say gird your loins, because next year, we're back to full, and you're looking for bus drivers and all of that, so.
Absolutely.
All the best, and thank you for what you do.
All right, thanks.
L5 was my next one, and it is, and I don't know if we're going to be doing this later, it says the scoring documents for MM and J, are we going to get an update on that soon? Is this just to hire whom?
I'll let Dr. Savage come up and address that one.
Mr. Rickert, back to both of them. Agenda items.
It's approval, the ranking of RFQ, building official services, new construction of J Elementary, and expansion of MM Middle School.
That's just it coming, moving forward for the ranking and order, so that we can begin negotiations with those entities.
Okay, and this is for the GC or?
It's for J Elementary.
No, 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 I'm saying, is this for the contractor?
Correct, BO is building official, and we have three legs of the triangle, an architect, a construction manager, and a building official for our engagement in Phase 1. This will complete the board, bring, brought forward the ranking. When I have all three contracts negotiated, I create a Phase 1 total project cost, I attach these all, all as backup, you will assumably approve them, and the next morning, I ask the superintendent to execute all documents.
Okay, and this may be for, Mr. Savage, you said that you're using the new process that you brought forth, so how does this fit in that new process?
Yes, obviously, this is further along, this is after the, this is the conclusion of the procurement phase of that process, so that's approximately four months of work and so forth. The way the new process would function differently is that the scoping documents that the procurement department uses, upon which to build, to bid out the services, is also incorporated into that piece, so that's, that's a future change and future processes to this. So that's, that's a future change and future processes to this effect. It doesn't change this step. This step will always kind of continue to happen because it's simply getting the vendors on board with their particular piece of the project.
And I would like to, maybe in the future, sit down with you so you could lay out the new one and say, this is where we are and this is how it's going to go from here.
Absolutely.
So you're saying that projects that were already started are going to continue on the old process, correct?
Yes, this one is a little bit, this was a little further along. We had already known, we were doing an elementary school, and then, of course, I mean, this predates today, of course, this is quite a ways back. But yes, what we're talking about in terms of the new scoping and so forth is getting real clarification about what we'd like to do, long before we ever get to this stage.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I had spoken to the superintendent about the bridge situation, so perhaps we can get together and discuss that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
And my last one, you guys may not want to leave. The last one is L10, and that, it says modular, so you know my ears perked up. And if you can talk about panelized modular buildings, please.
Yeah, this is just another vendor that procurement has reached out to provide portable leasing to our, our organization.
So are we looking to change from the company we're using?
We want multiple companies so we get the best possible bids. We had only one up until this point, and now they're bringing in a piggyback bid with this firm, from a Swanee County bid, to utilize them as another potential vendor.
And does that mean we're looking to purchase more?
We don't purchase portables, we couldn't afford it. They're $100,000 apiece even before you set them. So if we need additional portables, we would just lease, like we currently are doing at many sites.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Or is there any, anyone else with any questions? Mr. Pre Bruno?
May I answer Ms. Gittens' questions with regards to the audit committee at this time?
Sure.
So there, just so Ms. Gittens and the board knows, tomorrow, you will have a report from RSM, and there will be a scope of work that will be presented to the board. And in that scope of work, it also includes the review and finalization of the audit committee policy. So hopefully tomorrow, the board will approve that so we can move forward with finalizing that policy.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I, I just have one quick question. Can you just tell me what I, oh, where was, I'm so sorry. I1, I1 Retirement by Sale, what does that mean? Sold? It's a removal items, approval to remove items from official property records? I'm just-
Yeah, I believe so. Let me pull it up.
Just trying to figure out, what does that mean? It's one item, and it just says retirement by sale. Because we sold it, or? I understand the obsolete and the beyond repair, but I've never seen that one before.
I just, I'm trying to remember what it is.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. So if I am remembering this one correctly, and I will definitely email you to follow up with some details if I'm not, but this one was for a set of steel drums, and this one was, was, I believe, sold from one of our school locations to another. But when it was sold, it was sold at a lesser amount than what we currently tag. So it's taken off the books because at the time of its initial acquisition, it was of an amount that we, that we track. But at the time of the sale, that amount no longer is. So I believe that was the deal with this particular transaction.
Okay, so it's, it's just in the district, we've just sold it to another contractor?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Since she's there, can I ask her one more question? On the budget amendment, on page five?
And this is I3, that one?
Uh.
Or the budget report, I2?
Um, I think it's I2, hold on.
I2.
It, it says the budget amendment, no, it's I3.
Three.
Three, okay.
And on page five?
In the, okay, in the attachment, yep.
The community services. And capital outlay, 180, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Is that what was budgeted for community outlay? And I'm confused about that, and 174,889. The total.
Okay, understood. So I'm seeing on, under, let's see, page five, so this is in the general appropriations, you're looking at the headline under community services, and you're seeing the amount of budgeted change of 174,889? And you're asking where that number is derived from? Is that what the question is?
So I'm, I'm assuming the 180 was the budgeted, and where we're at now is the 174? Am I looking at that incorrectly?
Um, yeah, well, no, a little bit different. So there's three columns here. So at the beginning of the month, or at 3:31, that first column on the left shows what the budget was then. That middle column, the amount of change, shows the accumulation or the summary total of all the changes that happened within the budget in that month. And then that last column, which has 430, 21 revised budget, that is the new revised budget in each of those object code categories underneath that function. So the 174,889 is the cumulative total of all changes within that function for the month in that, in that fund.
Okay, and the 189,21 was what was?
That was, that was specifically the budget change to anything in the 600 object codes.
Okay, I got it.
Anything related to the capital outlay object codes. That 180,000 was a reduction in the budget for anything under those capital outlay object codes within that function for the month, leading to the new total budget in that, in that function and object of 6,292,889. Okay?
I think I got it.
All right.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Desamore.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to pause for a second. Thank you, Dr. Atkins, and Saf for being here. And Ms. McClung, we will, I'm going to start with you. All right, thank you for assisting us on this.
You're welcome. Good afternoon.
Moving around, you know I have to leave a couple minutes early. Can I raise two issues for consideration during good of the order? Because I'm not going to have time. The first is, do we want to have a writing prompt for our final candidates on the seventh, sixth, on the sixth and the seventh, I'm sorry, the seventh and the eighth? So while people are waiting to be interviewed, we could provide them with a writing prompt, they could provide us with a writing sample. And the second is, what do we want to do about interviewing candidates virtually? I'm, I'm not sure we want to pay to have four people come into town and put them up overnight and all that for an interim position? Can we do it via Zoom? That's for the board's discussion. I just wanted to raise those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If I have those, we will do that. Have that conversation. Ms. McClung, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. So our first item on the agenda this afternoon is to talk about the board's self-evaluation. So displayed, you will see the composite evaluation, which has each board member's ratings. First thing I wanted to let you know was that we did discover that on the final evaluation, the final overall score, in Ms. Fisher's, the percentage was correct, but the grade that displayed was an F, and that actually should have been a D, 63% correlates to a D. So that's been corrected in this version, and we will post the corrected one as well. So we'll begin with the first dimension, which is contextual. And you can see the, each question or each item has the score of each board member, as well as the average score, and then also the comparison to last year's score. So I'll open that up for any discussion, and if you would like to talk about any actions that you would like to take for, for opportunities for improvement, I will take notes on those. So it's whatever the board's preference.
Thank you. So again, the items on the right, at the end on the right, were last year, and then, so for instance, this year, we are down on our first column.
Any comments in the contextual dimension? Okay, so we'll move on to dimension.
Is Ms. Chivinelli, Ms. Chivinelli here?
No.
She said she was not, but then I did hear her.
I heard something as well. Said she wasn't going to be on. Okay.
But I did hear.
Ms. Patrica?
As we're hiring a new superintendent, it might be important for the board to come together and have a discussion surrounding vision and mission, and making sure that we're hiring a superintendent who can carry forward that vision and mission, and also the strategic plan. I think everybody here has expressed support for the strategic plan, but making sure the board is behind it and focused on hiring a superintendent who will promote that strategic plan, I think, will be important in this category.
So basically, an organizational fit, as you're considering your superintendent, who fits with the vision, mission, and values of the district.
And it's entirely possible that the vision and mission don't reflect this board's view. And so if that's what we're stating our vision and mission are as a district, and the board is hiring someone, but the board doesn't agree with the, the vision and mission, then there won't be alignment there. So just, I guess, sort of refocusing us on that vision and mission with an eye toward change, if that's necessary.
So that relates to number three, which is the board reviews the district's mission statement and finds it to be aligned with the vision statement. And as you can see, your average on that was a 2.6. So I'm hearing that there, that you may be requesting a workshop, or at least a discussion around the vision and mission. Am I hearing that correctly, Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there, if the rest of my colleagues are interested, yes.
Ms. Gittens?
And I, as I look at it, the scores are so bad. I mean, it's, it's an opportunity for us to, like, regroup and figure out what do we do. My concern is, you know, putting this in the file until next year when we do it again, and not actually take, doing the hard work of saying, how did we get here, and how do we get out of it? So I agree that we should have some type of workshop, and I would focus on the, the F scores, first of all. And prior to it, maybe suggest that, at least the ones that are the Fs, to say, everyone come up with a, what do you think we can do? You know, what's your suggestion to get us out of that?
So considering an action plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other comments? Mrs. Fisher?
So I think that in doing this self-evaluation, a couple of things came to mind. One, this has been an unusual year, which may partially account for the difference in the May 2020 average and this year's. And I, I think that, I think that we all agree on the strategic plan. I know that many of us have been working diligently on our portion of the strategic plan and implementation, and communicating that with our constituents and community. I, I just think that we do have an opportunity here to come together a little bit better and to try to arrive at a more common understanding about what exactly it is that we need to be doing to support that strategic plan, and of course, the mission and vision of the district, which I don't think any of us have said that we disagree with. So I think there's another underlying situation here, and I don't know how we pull that out and identify it, and then try to problem solve to help get us on a better feeling of consensus.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens?
Well, and just kind of responding to that, we're seven individuals, and I think if we each put down what we think personally that we can do to get past certain areas, then it's going to afford us the opportunity to listen to each other and to hear what things we can do to change. We're not going to get past it until we do.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Well, I see, like, on two, Board Effectively Discusses the Research About Events in Trends in Larger Communities. That one is, there's, that's one of the lowest ones. And I guess I would like to, to hear from my colleagues, why did we rate ourselves so low for that one? Or what do we feel? Because if you look across that one, that one is pretty much, it's either zero or at best two for that particular-
Which one?
Number, number two.
Educational?
It's a 1.1.4 on that one. That's the lowest one that we have.
The educational piece?
It's the, it's the-
Are you still in section one?
We're still on the first one.
Okay.
That is number three, I'm sorry, number two. Board Effectively Discusses the Research About Events and Trends in the Larger Community That May Affect Schools.
Oh.
I know, like, Ms. Chivinelli has zero, and then we have ones and two.
She was first.
Oh, Ms. Patrica?
So for me, it's a matter of taking a broad view of the district. I get a lot of emails in support of masks. I run into a lot of people at church, I run into a lot of people in the grocery store in support of masks, but we have some people who come to board meetings and, and speak out against them. When I'm in Astero, and we're talking about the building of a school on Three Oaks, I'm hearing from people who are angry about it, we're all hearing from people who are angry about it, but I'm also hearing from large swaths of the community that are happy about it. They're not showing up at board meetings to complain about it, they're not showing up at board meetings to say, yeah, we're so happy with what you're doing, but they're there, and they're an important part of the consideration process. So when I gave us a one here, I think it's because sometimes we get, and, and you know, this is human nature, I think that we get a little bit sidelined by, by the angry emails and the angry comments without understanding, we represent the entire community, not just those that show up at board meetings, not just those that have the wherewithal to email board members, but the entire community, including, you know, the ones that I run into when I'm walking in the morning or whatever, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, thank you. Ms. Gittens?
My concern in this area is, excuse me when it says research about events and trends in the larger community. In my experience, the time that I've been here, we, we really have a hard time with the word change, and maybe changing it to evolve. But as our demographic and our communities have evolved, we have a very difficult time accepting that we need to evolve with it. One of the things I brought up earlier today, when we talked about the graduation rates, and the graduation rate was wonderful, however, of that 5,000 and some students, almost 1,000 of them were in the other or undecided group. And we don't talk about that as much as we talk about the 1.3 increase. And that's why this is an issue for me.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
So when I read this, and when I thought about it when I was scoring, I think about the things that are local that impact our ability to deliver high-quality education, like the increase in English language learners, like the poverty level. And, and I gave it a score of two because I do think that staff, when we do the district's strategic plan review components, attempts to address- plan review components, attempts to address in some of the action plans that they bring forward, steps that they are taking in response to those things. And I know that they do talk about research that is, or research or evidence of best practices outside of this, outside of Lee County and outside of the state. So I think, from my point of view, when I looked at this, I think approaching our strategic plan rather than in pieces all the time, one way to look at it would be to look at it in the way of trends. And so what does this trend mean academically? What impact does it have on us financially? What does this trend mean in terms of our ability? Oh, even in operations. So that's, so I think we're all looking at this question and responding to it, you know, in a different way. So I just, just want to point that out.
No, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, a little bit like Ms. Morgan, I really focused on the word research. And frankly, I put it a one, but I don't know that we discuss research all, all that much. And what I'm seeing, events and trends, I'm seeing it, social and political trends and, you know, facts of, of life in Lee County outside of our governance here as a, as a school district, as a school board, things like, this is not a county that has been big on supplying social services. Florida's not good about among the states, social services, and Lee County ranks way down. Now, does that affect us as a district? Absolutely, because of the poverty rates of, of our children. So, I mean, there's so many, that's just one, one hu, actually huge example. To me, the research has to do with homelessness of our children, the number of children in foster care, the number of families which live in poverty and the children go to bed hungry, although we have done a stellar job of, you know, providing the, the meals as, as best we can. But I know there's a, there's a book that was published, it's been a few years ago, that something like the schools, we can't do it alone. And that's what I would look at, the, the social and political ramifications of how this county lines up and what it does to affect our children, which is monumental.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Fisher?
So just piggybacking on that, you know, I first said I thought that this year has been a different year. We've had tremendous growth. We've had the pandemic and we've had in our economy, a diversity where some people are doing extremely well and other people have lost their jobs and are having a hard time getting back into them. This all affects us because it affects our population of students. It impacts the families of our staff. So I think that it's a very important part of what we consider when we look at our larger community. We are the economic driver for the community. We're the preparers for tomorrow's workforce and it's a big job. So when we have these issues, which have had such a dramatic impact, I mean, just the traffic alone in the morning has been an issue for some people. The fact that we have such a high homeless population, the fact that in the time when the children were out of school, there was such a big increase in reports of child abuse, abuse. And so many people have been impacted with their health and the access to healthcare. So all of those things have an impact on us. So when we discuss the research, which is ongoing at this point, about our trends in our larger community, and we have the discussion, but then really, we're all in this together. This is not something that we can solve on our own. So we have to partner with our entire community, the other large employers, the other governmental agencies, and certainly our stakeholders. And are we doing a good job of that?
Well, I, I really appreciate that. And I know that we could do this. And it's good to hear all the feedback from everybody. And this is, I mean, if we had a whole entire week to do this, it would be really good to hear what everybody would think of this, but we don't have that. But I, I do really appreciate hearing the different perspectives of what it is. And then, you know, then we can use this, to me, this is a tool that we can look at and see how we can improve ourselves. Ms. Gittens?
When you look at number five, it kind of goes along with number two, because it does talk about the values of the district, which leads to the strategic plan. It all kind of, you know, links together. And it, have we really looked at the major changes in our community, like Ms. Fisher was just talking about, and really said, look, we need to stop and look at our strategic plan? Because something as simple as, you know, community engagement, and we have been faced with that, with the digital divide and all those types of things. And did we stop and say midstream, not just continuing along the path we're on, but do we need to look at what we're doing in our strategic plan when major things like this happen?
Ms. Morgan? Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
But see, I think we do talk about our strategic plan in components every year. So I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, we certainly have the opportunity to do it. The administration has made time and, and staff available to do that. So I guess I need more information about what you're saying to understand better what you're about, Ms. Gittens.
Well, and, and this is why I think we really need a workshop with this. I mean, this is great kind of on the surface of it, but to have time to really discuss how deep we need to go. And that's what I mean about looking at this and saying, each of us coming up with, what can we do to improve this one? And then all just sit down together and say, well, here's what I think, here's what I think, and put it together and come up with some plan. That's improvement. That's innovation. That's moving forward.
So it sounds like what was being proposed is that we have a general discussion today around those areas and then plan a workshop in the future. And part of the homework for that would be to suggest actions that you could take to improve areas. For example, something that I've heard several of you mention for this is that as you are making decisions, the board needs to take a wider view of how those decisions, or how trends in the community affect those decisions and how the decisions align with the district's mission, vision, and values. And so that would be one action step that you could include as you work toward making that plan. So if there's agreement on that, then what I would ask you to do is, as we go along, to be making notes of specific things that you want to be sure that you address. And we'll keep our comments to the general areas today so that we can do this in a timely manner today. Is that acceptable?
Yes, Ms. Gittens?
And one of the things, I had brought this up some time ago, that I believe our evaluation should be similar to the evaluations that we give for our employees, that it, this is kind of antiquated in the way we do it. All of our others have all of the, the rubric type setup for it. So I really would like to see if we're evaluating ourself, ourselves in this way, we should do it as we do our employees as well.
And I believe this came from the FSBA many years ago. I don't remember the first time it was used. If, if there's another board member who was here when it was, when it first came into use, they can correct me. But I believe this one has been in use for several years and that it originally came from the FSBA.
I'd like to suggest we change it.
Well, that's something we can discuss when we look at other avenues as well.
Thank you. So are there other general things that you see in the contextual piece that you want to be sure you address in your workshop with your action plan? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to dimension two. Dimension two is the educational dimension. You're, you can see that the scores there, again, compared to last year, were a little bit lower. The area, the highest area was number seven, reading the board's policy procedures and employee contracts. And the lowest area was number eight, the board has discussions about the effectiveness of its performance. So we'll open that for discussion of general areas you would like to see addressed in your action plan. Ms. Gittens?
Well, I'll start with number, were you going to call on someone else?
No.
The reason my number six was so low, because I.
What number are you on? Six?
Six.
Okay, thank you.
Communication is, it's lacking. I mean, there are things that all of us don't know in a timely manner. And it's not, to me, it's not okay to say, well, eventually, you know, everybody will know. We need to look at some method of communication that's within the sunshine, but allows us all to be on the same page, at least to have the same information in a timely manner.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
So I, I think that essentially, with the board updates, there's been an improvement in the distribution of information. And looking at that alone, I would say that we're all getting the same information at the same time. But this, this says to me that there's a perception that some people know things that other people don't. And I, and I tend to agree with that to a point. However, we're all, seven of us out there in our communities may be doing different things, different parts of the strategic plan. We have different interests and, you know, let's face it, everything is relative to the position of the observer, as Einstein once said. So if you're standing by the elephant's trunk versus his side versus his tail, you're going to be seeing different things. So I think that we have to take that into account. And maybe, I, I just kind of came up with this one little opportunity for improvement, but I think maybe as we give our reports and our board comments, maybe we individually need to do a little better job making sure that we keep our colleagues informed if we're doing something, like if I'm doing something with the city of Cape Coral Government, I need to make sure that I report that. And maybe somehow have a little clearinghouse where we can record that so that it's there. You know, maybe I'll say it and somebody didn't hear it or understand what I was saying, but if I put it into like a, a data bank, okay, this is what I've done, maybe that would help to level that feeling that we're not all knowing the same thing at the same time.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, we, actually, we had that conversation in recent history, because you'll recall, we used to do the calendar. And to me, when we had the calendar, it was, it was helpful to see. I always, you know, you, you try to keep abreast of everything, but for instance, with me being an at-large member, often I'm not privy to the things that are happening in the smaller communities, for those of you that are single-member district. I mean, that's just an example. I liked the calendar and I remember the arguments against it. And I thought that we had even discussed in lieu of the calendar, something like what Ms. Fisher just said. I'm, I'm not positive about that. It's, it kind of rings a bell, but we haven't done that. So I, I do think that's, you know, that's, that's not the whole thing behind a low scoring on this particular item. But yeah, I, I think there are a lot of things out there that might be interesting to other board members that we just don't know about until it's too late.
Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
And I will agree with Ms. Vaughn. I think it was detrimental to our communication process, et cetera, to take away the calendar. Because, I mean, there's things going on in my district that I don't know about. So, and there are things in other districts that I will go to just because I'm interested in that. And I, I just think it was a, another notch down on us communicating and sharing and collaborating.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
And, and, and those are really important key words, communicating, sharing, and collaborating. And I think that's where we are falling down to some degree. I think it's difficult for us to, first of all, to be introspective and take responsibility for the things that we do or don't do. And next of all, to keep track of everyone else's. This is a huge district and there's a lot going on. And, you know, I mean, you could, your neighbor could be doing something that you don't know about and that happens every day. But maybe that's where we could place a little bit of effort in trying to, and, and I know, you know, sunshine law is, is an inhibitor to some degree, but we, I think we need to know that it is not illegal for us to talk to one another and ask how our families are or just, you know, have a conversation about our perceptions about different issues that we're not voting on. And if I may, Mrs. Morgan, I'm just going to say, Mrs. Morgan and I had a conversation the other day. And when we actually sit down and have a conversation, I think we found that we had more in common than we actually realized and that we do work together more than we really think we do. And there was a time when I did suggest an activity that I've done in my past professional life. And, and it's just that kind, and you know what it is too, Ms. Gittens.
I'm not doing it.
Well, then there you go. So there's the problem because we have an.
No, you wanted us to go off of something and some, some.
Oh. Not that. No, this was, this was something else.
Okay.
It's called cross the line. You can look it up. But it's, we do have more in common than, and we do, we all know that. Our hearts are in the right place. We care about this district. We want to do the best thing for the kids in the community. And we have a different way of approaching it. But unless we're willing to give a little and actually compromise to come to consensus, we're going to stay the same. So I think, I think we need to be willing to take one step forward and try not to take two steps back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say, I didn't mean I wouldn't do the exercise, but you had suggested some
A boat, right?
Life rafts or boats are in the, see? No. Swinging from something or whatever.
Demonstrate your courage. Take a chance.
I'm courageous on land, on the shore.
We had a lifeguard standing by.
Swim, Gwen.
Oh, good.
I just have, Vaughn? Yeah, I just have to comment because, I don't know if you could tell my, that I was laughing under the mask as soon as Ms. Fisher said activities. And I'm like, oh my gosh. And I was thinking about all of those things, like, I'm not a water person. And you know what I'm saying?
Do it on dry.
I don't, I don't do like falling backward and trusting somebody to catch me.
Patrica?
I would be very hesitant to ask Ms. Roman to do any more than she's already doing in terms of our schedules. I do, for each briefing meeting, review the previous two weeks' activities that are on my calendar and report to the board. I also, somebody said the perception of communication. And I, I have to tell you that I sit here incredibly, incredibly frustrated when a board member demands information that has. when a board member demands information that has already been provided to us, either in the backup material for a meeting or in a board update. That is incredibly, and, and despite the fact that the question is asked and the information is provided, the, the finger is still pointed at staff as, as not communicating effectively with the board. And that is a repeated experience that I have had sitting at this dais. And that makes us all look bad. So I, I don't know what more, you know, if I sit and I have a conversation with Attorney DePree Bruno about the law surrounding LGBT, it is going to be signi-, the conversation I'm gonna have with her is gonna be significantly different from the conversation that Ms. Fisher is gonna have with her. So will I get some information from her that Ms. Fisher might not get? And will Ms. Fisher get information from her that I might not get? Absolutely, that's the nature of human interaction. We ask different questions. We make different comments. That doesn't mean anything's being hidden. It means that, that I gather information differently because I care about the law and she cares about mental health. You know, like, it's just, it's the reality of several different people. So I'd like to see us stop pointing fingers at each other and saying, you're getting information I'm not getting, and perhaps rely on the strengths associated with the way each individual's brain functions and the information they're able to gather and the way they're able to process that information, given their education and experience. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I have to respond to that, that asking questions such as in the gender review. Many times I do have the answers somewhat. But if I have been asked by a community some of those questions and, and they're thinking it's one way, I'm going to bring it up. Because if there's one person in the community that has that question, there's, there's several more that possibly do. So many times it, the questions that I may bring about are to answer questions that I have been asked and to make sure they're getting the right answers. And I take offense to the fact that asking questions is pointing fingers at staff. That, that picture has been painted by several people that if you ask questions, you are accusing, you are demeaning, you are, you know, putting people down. No, I'm just trying to get an answer to a question and just trying to get information. It is not saying that staff did something wrong. I'm asking them because they are the expert. And I thought this was the venue to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. And I don't believe that anybody was trying to single you out for any of this. So Ms...
Thank you.
Ms. McCollum?
Thank you. So again, with the educational dimension, if you will make notes of the areas, it sounds like communication is the, the big area, big topic of discussion. So if you will make the notes of those so that when we develop this process of where those will go, you will send your recommendations in terms of action steps. So one of the action steps may, that may be suggested is to return to the use of a calendar. And then there would be discussion around that, how that would impact board members, how that would impact staff. And then you would make that decision at that next workshop. We'll move on to dimension three, which is interpersonal. On interpersonal, the lowest area was a point nine?
Point seven, point six.
Oh, I'm sorry, point six. You're right. Sorry, point six on board handles conflict openly and constructively. And the highest, I believe, was a two-seven. Yes, with a two-seven, which was at our board meetings, there is at least as much dialogue among members as there is among members and staff. So we'll open up interpersonal for discussion. Ms. Morgan?
So I've been thinking a lot about what Ms. Gittens said, I think, two meetings ago, talking about we don't listen to one another. And I'm looking at how we're sitting here. And I'm thinking that part of the problem is, because of the way we're arranged, we end up talking out and not to one another. And, and also having masks on makes it really difficult. So I know we stopped doing workshops, especially in the training room, because of the COVID. But I think it would really benefit this board in terms of its interaction if we were sitting and talking to one, one another face to face instead of talking out to the audience. Now, if that doesn't work, I have brought my Masai talking stick. And if we need to get to passing the talking stick around so that everybody has an opportunity to speak and everybody is listening when that person speaks, I'm willing to help the team out with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Any other comments around the interpersonal? Ms. Patrica?
I'd really like to see us talk about issues instead of taking offense to something that somebody else said. Let's stick to the issues. Let's talk about the issues.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sometimes I think it's just the delivery. So, and, you know, we are all individual people and it's how we perceive and... And, and that's why I said a few minutes ago, I don't think anything was, you know, to any one of us, but it's the way that we take it in on our own. So I, I think the issues, we definitely need to concentrate on issues. But then again, we still always will have that human nature and, you know, we are humans. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, number four, and you can see that's the one I think that was the worst. And, and number, are we number three or number two?
Yes, we're still number three. So the lowest one was, was the handles conflict openly and constructively. Number four is related to that. And it says board members are able to be open and honest without fear of being ostracized.
And I have that as a zero because, and I am only speaking for myself personally. I am constantly the recipient of that. And if, if something is said that I take a certain way, then I'm told, don't take it personally. And you can only hear that so many times. Because saying, don't take it personally, is saying to me that I'm doing something wrong. And I've heard it from many of my colleagues, well, you know, just don't take it personally. But when you continue to hear that, it, it's saying, well, you know, we're not the problem. You are the problem in how you see what we're doing and what we're saying to you. And my whole, the issue is asking questions because that's how I learn and that's how I get information. But it has been a concerted effort across the district with my colleagues and with staff that I'm a troublemaker, that I'm hard to work with because I ask too many questions. That is what has been said. And I don't know how to stop, you know, it's not feeling that I'm ostracized. I am ostracized. So saying to me, don't take it personally, is just not the best thing if you, to, to mend it or to make it better.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
So in that line, number four, there were two other board members who also ranked it a zero. So they must be feeling the same way. Then two others ranked it a one. So I think that, that feeling or that perception is shared. And highest score was a two out of four. So I, I mean, I think that that is part of the problem, that we are seven individuals with seven different personalities. And I know I've said this to you before, Ms. Gittens, about my brother, right? And so you are a valuable, integral part of this board, just as the rest of the six of us are. So I think we have to, if we're going to work as a body that has to make decisions, we need to stay focused on, like what Mrs. Patrica would say, the issues and try, and this is hard for me, to leave the personalities and those... We're all driven by our feelings. Come on, you know, we, we are driven by our emotions, whether we want to think that we do or admit it or not. But that's just the way it is. And I think that it's incumbent on all of us to make an effort, to put that aside and stay focused on what is the job that we're here to do. And it's as hard as it is to leave our own personal feelings out of it. But you, you know, each one of us brings something unique and special to this board. And we're all intelligent, educated people. And, you know, I, I, I wish that there were a way that I could make that different. But you're not alone in what you feel because two other board members also ranked it a zero. Including if I, Ms. Patrica, so could you comment on that then?
I mean, I, you know, I disagree with people. I have a strong personality. I'm not everybody's cup of tea. And I'm accused of bullying because I disagree with people. And I, I don't know how to express myself. Being who I am, you take too much out of me and I'm no longer an effective person? I, I don't know, so I just sit here with my mouth shut. I don't say anything anymore. I make comments on the issues and I don't say anything anymore. And I haven't been accused of bullying in a while. But I also haven't contributed too much to the conversations with regard to decisions that we've been making. So I don't, I am in a lose-lose situation, as I sit at this board table.
And that puts the board in a lose-lose situation because your contributions are valuable. And, you know, we...
Not if I'm bullying you, Mary.
We need to get our acts together. And, and I think it's not that you're bullying. I think sometimes people's delivery, as Ms. Jordan just said, people's delivery is different. You know, some people can say, you know, they can be stabbing you and smiling and you're gonna say, oh, thank you. And other people are, might be saying, oh, you look nice today, but you're taking offense to it. So I think we just need to try to focus on, more on the issues.
Ms. Patrica, did you want to respond to that before we move on? We had a couple of other comments.
The other thing that I wanted to say is being on the losing end of a vote is not fun. But it is not being bullied and it is not being forced to do anything. It is the nature of being on a board. The board, the only time we have any power or authority is when we're sitting here together as a body. And I'm on the losing end of votes. And, and I would, I would venture to say, few people at this table are as competitive as I am. So it's hard to be on the losing end of a vote. But it's also our duty to get behind the decision of the board and move on. It doesn't mean disagreement isn't disrespectful. Voting against someone's ideas is not disrespectful. It's, it's the nature of our work. And I believe that if we could embrace each other's differences and really listen to what people are saying on the issues and get the personal out of it, then we would make better decisions in the end. But again, I, I don't wanna say things because I, I'm, I'm just too afraid of being accused of badness.
Thank you. We have Ms. Morgan. Then Ms. Vaughn, did you have your hand up a moment ago? Okay, so Ms. Morgan and then Ms. Gittens.
So I'm thinking about this morning's meeting. And let's see, it was the part when, when Ms. Vaughn was running the meeting. And she said, we're gonna go through this bit by bit and we're going to make decisions and we're gonna go on this process. And there was constant, heck no, so I, not constant, but there were frequent interruptions with side conversations. And she kept trying to draw us back in. And then there would be conversations that people wanted to have on the side. We haven't figured out how to have a linear conversation and park things so that people feel that they were heard and it will be addressed at a future time. That, to me, I think, is one of the reasons that there's so much back and forth. Because when someone brings something new into the conversation, then everybody feels that they need to jump in at that point. And, and, and the person who's, who's running the meeting is trying to get us back where we belong. So I think, I think some of it's structural. And I think we've got some bad habits. And I think we need to think about how to manage our process so that we all do feel that we've, we've been heard, we've had an opportunity to be heard. So that's my response to what's been said. I think we stick to the issues and we do fine. It's, we struggle when we feel like others are interfering with our ability to, to participate. And, and so we've just gotta figure that out. So I, I said enough, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Gittens?
And I agree that people struggle when others put a pen or whatever in the way they feel things should go. That, I feel, is our main issue. That the mindset is, we sit here, you've got the information, you say what you have to say and agree with it and go home. And that's not what I do if I ask questions about things. I have gotten belittled more for asking questions than anything else. And I go back home and I watch the, the meetings over and over again. And I see how many times I am either ignored or cut off or told we're out of time or we need to move forward. And then I sit in the same meeting and watch other board members go on as long as they want to, interrupt people, but they're not called on it as much as I am. And it's just a fact. And it's not just me that notices it. And there's a lot of people that notice it as well. And I recall about, it's not about winning or losing a vote. Because if you look back over a year ago now, in a meeting, I said to each of you in a meeting, same time of year, talking about our evaluations. And I said, I will probably never win a vote in the, the rest of the time that I'm here. But I will make it clear why I'm voting and thinking the way I do. And I have been true to myself in doing that. So you know exactly why I don't. I just, I hate the fact of people labeling me as a troublemaker or, you know, whatever, because I ask too many questions. That, if we could stop doing that and, and accept the fact that everybody's not gonna agree with, you know, maybe what the majority thinks. So...
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Then Ms. Jordan.
Oh, let Ms. Jordan go first, please.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I, I was just gonna say, I don't think, we all know, we all know who we are. I mean, at least I know who I am. So regardless of what, if somebody was calling me a bully, a troublemaker, or this or that, I know who I am and what I am not. So it doesn't matter what people are saying to you. And this is what we teach our children to, be true to who you are. We understand that we have issues to deal with. This is what we need to make sure that we are doing that. And if we can concentrate on that and work together, there is always opportunity to ask questions. And all of us have the right, and everybody should have the right, to speak and, speak their truth and be able to participate in everything that we, that we are working on. Because without that, it doesn't make sense for all seven of us to be here. If, if we're not gonna be able to, or we don't feel that we have that right, or we don't wanna, you know, say what's on our mind because somebody's gonna get offended or this one's not gonna like that, we can't worry about that. We have to do what we have to do. And we have all worked together long enough to, I think we pretty much all know how each, how we all think and react. That should be a given by now. So I, I just think that we just have to concentrate on moving us forward, you know, working on what we have to do, working, respecting one another and working together to do what we need to do and hopefully improve in our scores.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher and then Ms. Vaughn?
So I heard a couple people say, winning the vote. I'm not gonna win the vote. We are here to make a decision as a board, a, a body. So I think that we win the vote when we make a decision, a majority of us make a decision to approve or decline a recommendation that comes to us. And the vote is won when it's what's best for our kids and our community. So individually... So individually, I, I think it would be counterproductive for us to worry about winning a vote. I think that we need to vote on behalf of our constituents. We need to vote based on the information we've been given and what we believe is the best thing. We may not all agree, but that's why there are seven of us, so that we can all give our input and we can review and discuss the different perspectives and then come up with a decision as a board that's best for our district and community.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I wanted to offer a perspective as a facilitator, as, like, this morning, in charge of a certain section of the meeting or, or a meeting. And I want to try to make this very objective. One of the things that I see when I'm in that role is something, and I know that when I'm sitting participating, I've often been guilty of the various, very thing that frustrates the heck out of me. That is, for instance, I'm very, we do this, we do that, we, okay. And what I was trying to do, for example, at this ward's meeting this morning and some others, was not to cut anybody off, but to, here's what we're discussing now. Let's only discuss that. Okay, when we're done with that, we're gonna take this. And what happens is, again, I've been guilty of it, if we go off topic, that just like doubles or triples the time we're going to spend, and we're going to lose track of the particular task that was laid out in, in the beginning. So I think really, most of us, there are a couple of board members that do stay on, I'd say, Ms. Morgan, I, I would say is one of the better ones that will stay on topic. But we don't do a real good job of staying on topic often, and I think it would behoove us, all of us, to work on it and to really, really listen. What is it exactly that we're talking about now? I'll just write down my thought that's gonna come up later in the conversation and say it then. Hopefully that, that makes sense to everyone because it just doubles and triples and, and which means that we start getting behind in terms of time. And, you know, most everybody here, or everybody here has had either the vice chair or chair position, and you know that sometimes you just have to say, yes, this is important, but when the conversation gets repetitive, call the vote or, or wind down that piece of the conversation. So I, I think interpersonal, something objective like that, that we can all work on, that has nothing, that, I, I think that'll be beneficial.
Thank you. Other comments in the interpersonal area? Okay, so it seems like the, the two big ideas that, that were repeated there were being focused on the issues and staying with one topic as you go along, and then taking the personalities out of the equation and, and trying to really maintain your focus on what is being said rather than who is saying it. Ms. Gittens?
I, I just have to clear the air about, you know, winning a vote. Ms. Fisher, I was not talking about winning per se. It's, it's like being on the side of a vote that is accepted. And if you go back the last several meetings, something that happens continually is that when I make a suggestion and there's crickets and nothing happens with it, and a few minutes later someone will say the same thing in a different way, and everybody accepts it and they move on. And I, it, it happens all the time. So just go back and watch meetings and you will see. And a couple of times I've said, "Well, I brought that up two weeks ago, and nobody said a word, and all of a sudden now it's brought up and it's, this is what we're going to do." So just an example, but I'm not talking about winning. That was not what I meant at all.
Thank you. So we'll move on now to the analytical dimension. And the analytical, the lowest one was number two. The board explicitly examines the downside or possible pitfalls of any important decision it's about to make. And then we had two that were tied for the highest with a 2.7. The first one, I've been in board meetings where subtleties of issues dealt with escaped the board. And the other one was number three. Board questions administrative proposals requiring the superintendent to defend or reconsider his/her recommendations. So the analytical dimension is now open for discussion. Okay, if there are no comments on this area, Mrs. Fisher? Ms. Fisher?
So, so I think this is a, a natural follow-up to the interpersonal because in our interpersonal discussion, we said, "Let's, you know, stay focused on the issues and don't take it personally." And I think in analytical is when we really need to be focused on the issues. And I think that sometimes that comment, and I don't remember, but more than one board member talked about listening carefully. And so that, one of the high scores was, "I've been in board meetings where subtleties of issues dealt with escaped the board." So I think that when we, A, do our homework and review our backup information in advance of the meetings, and when we do listen carefully to our colleagues, that wouldn't happen. You know, I mean, I could see that, that, and, and we do explicitly examine pitfalls. And, and it seems like some people will do that one time and other people won't have a comment or a question. But I think that as far as being analytical, that's where we are manifesting our ability to examine the, the issue and then consider what the ramifications might be, and then decide whether or not it is, the issue is one that we need to discuss further or, or vote on. So, and I think that our scores on here were pretty much more consistent across the board than in some of the other areas. So this is probably not our biggest area of concern.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on that area? So it's, it sounds like a lot of that does carry over from your interpersonal decision because there was a lot of discussion about how we really need to look at the issues and stay focused on that. So I can understand why there aren't so many comments on this one. So we'll move into the political area. This one actually had the highest scores. The low score on this area was a 2.0, I believe, let me double-check. And there were a, a couple of those, yes. So there was a 2.0 on showing an awareness of the impact decisions have on the community. There was a 2.0 on number seven. If the board thinks a group of constituents is likely to disagree with an action it's considering, it makes sure to learn how the public feels before rendering its decision. And there was a 2.0 on number nine. The board withstands the pressure of its special interest groups. The highest rating was a 4.0 on the board offers committees referenced in number four, Opportunities to Report at Meetings, which goes to the board advisory committees, which report quarterly. So we'll open the decision to, I'm sorry, the discussion around the dimension five, Ms. Jordan?
I, I scored high on the number seven because I do believe that we do take into consideration with all the emails that we receive, phone calls, texts, everything, and taking the, the time to read and listen to what they're saying and contacting the back. That, to me, is our responsibility. So you do hear, you have the opportunity of having, you know, all the sides speak. Sometimes you have more on one side than the other, depending upon what the issue is, but it does give us the opportunity to, to get feedback from, from community and actually just being out there in the community and listening to what, what they're saying, whether you are, you know, taking your walk, riding your bike, whatever you're doing, you know, being out at the games with your family, people do speak to you, and so you do have that opportunity to, to hear what's happening.
Thank you. Gittens? Mrs. Gittens?
Oh, okay. On the number seven, I will say I think maybe it's because of all of the things that have happened recently, but I think that the board as a whole is moving to understand number seven better, that the involvement of the community is very important. And I say we are improving because in the not-too-distant past, there were several board members that said, you know, "We make the decisions and not the public." And I'm not sure we were on the same page as to where that balance was. And like I've said before, certain issues have drawn out more public interest, but I think if we keep more of an even keel in, in the transparency and keeping the public involved, then there's not this heightened, "All of a sudden, we didn't know," and suddenly, you know, there's, there's an issue with the public. And number nine kind of bothers me in that, just the way it's worded. It is, it is offensive to some people that if they come and they are here based on a specific issue, do they fall within, you know, the pressure of a special interest group? I think that's insightful, the way that it's written, as opposed to saying something more positive as to, even like the number seven. You know, I don't know that we need nine, because it takes seven to a, a different level, and it, it marks people, it labels people, and, and we just, we really should not do that. So I really have a concern about the way that one's written.
Thank you, Mrs. Gittens. Other comments? Mrs. Patricker?
So number 10, I think we can, I, I see so many high scores, and I think we can do so much better here. I think that we can involve our students, they could make videos about changes they want to make. I mean, we saw this past year, parents really galvanize around best and brightest and actually effectuate change. We saw a lot of community involvement surrounding holding students harmless for tests, and we saw actual change. Not every issue that we will bring to the legislature will be as sexy as, you know, tests and, and college scholarships, so it won't necessarily appeal to everybody quite so broadly. But I think that, you know, as a state organization, FSBA is working to engage school board members in a more measurable way, meaning how many times have you met with your legislature, legislator? How many times you've had a legislator go to your, one of your schools? How many times have you posted on social media something positive about a fellow governing body in your county or whatever? I'd like to see us as a, a team come together and put together our own legislative plan, how we each can engage everyone in the community, whether it be parents or other electeds. I mean, I heard the other day, we talk, we talk all the time about education being the economic driver, and, and I heard the other day a county commissioner saying that we don't know how to manage our budget. And I'm like, first of all, you don't know anything about our budget. Second of all, how does that help the, the, the overall impression of the school district and make more people want to move here if county commissioner is saying that with no basis in fact or truth whatsoever, right? So if we could engage them more, I mean, I have engaged the current chair of the county commission, and he gets it. He looks at our budget, he sees our reserves, he thinks we're being effective in the, the handling of our taxpayer dollars. I think there are a few people who know public budgets better than he does. And, and so it's a matter of just, we're all on the same page and let's all work together. I think, I know I'm kind of rambling a little bit, but can we, as a team, put together a plan? And maybe we make it a competition, like who's the person who got the most legislators into our schools? That would certainly motivate me. It might not motivate everybody, but you know what I mean? Put together a step-by-step plan, each person take a piece of the plan, and then see where that gets us in terms of legislative. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
So that, that sort of, to me, goes back to the thing we talked about at the very beginning, where we don't talk about issues in the community and broader trends. And it seems to me that if we were talking about things in, some of our strategic plan in terms of a response to what we see locally, what we see statewide, what we see federally, that it would be easier for us to pull out things that we feel that they need to understand in the legislature or at the federal level, and, and advocate more effectively, and also perhaps engage the community more. Because frankly, I understand what Ms. Patricker is saying about board member activism, but I think the real problem is we have not figured out how to bring the community with us because we have not said that what we're looking at is responsive to their concerns. And so I, I agree with, with what's been said. I think, I think there's a lot more to be done there, which is why I'm hoping that going forward, you know, we will place more emphasis on issues and use that.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
No, I'm just agreeing with them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
And I think I, I think I won that bet already. Just saying. I think I won the bet of bringing them in to the schools.
Ms. Vaughn?
I, I think one of the problems, to piggyback on what Ms. Morgan just said, is that the folks in our community that are the neediest, they, they, they're not the, they, they don't have the wherewithal, they don't have the, sometimes the language skills. I know that they're different cultures, that I've learned that they are very hesitant or almost afraid to go in, into schools because they have such a respect, it's very refreshing, for schools and, and teachers, that sometimes if their child is not getting the services, they, they just don't know. And, and that's, that's really the, the sad thing, because the people that, in, in the best of all worlds, we should be hearing from the most, we almost never hear from them. And it's sadly ironic, very sadly ironic.
Thank you, Ms. Patricker.
So a way to perhaps make everybody at the table feel heard is if there's a subject that you'd like to discuss further, instead of just throwing it out there and saying something like, "We need to have a discussion where we put together a legislative plan." We could stop the meeting and say, "Ms. McClung, will you please put that on the list of parking lot items for the board to discuss at a future date?"
Thank you. Yes, I'd be happy to.
Nobody, nobody here responded to me directly and said, "Chris, that's a terrible idea," or "Chris, that's a great idea." But I now know we will have a future discussion on it because I have asked for it to be placed on the thing. Is that a fair way to make sure everybody feels heard and whatever issues we bring up will at some point be discussed in the future?
Yes, and, and also in terms of this one specifically, we, I believe that we will do a formal consensus at the end, but I believe there was agreement that we- at the end, but I believe there was agreement that we would bring forward another workshop where you would look at action plans for each area of this evaluation, and that would be a perfect place to have that action plan and that discussion around how do we get more legislative involvement.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Gittens.
An example of, kind of going back to what Ms. Vaughn was saying about including everyone, and it's true culturally, et cetera, there are some major portions of our district demographic that are not going to be standing at a microphone back there. And I can recall my colleagues, one of my colleagues anyway, saying to me in the past, "What is it that you need or that you want if you explain, then maybe we can band together and help you?" And when I did, for example, with the portables, that just didn't happen. So that's where the issue is with me. It depends on the topic, and if everyone wants to gather around that or not, and if collectively you all decide, "No, that's not a good thing," then it's pushed aside. But if we're going to work as a team, there have to be some tough decisions, some areas that you don't feel are important, but to others and to our constituents, it's very important. And do we need to rally around some of those things? Yes, we do.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
So going back to Ms. Vaughn, so maybe it would be a good ideal, do an outreach. We know in the community, there's so many different events and everything that they have, and perhaps, and I don't mind doing anything like that, we do get tables and set them up there and see how much information that we can bring there to wherever those locations are, Benita, the Dunbar area, wherever that is, North Fort Myers, they had Wolfball the other day, I mean, wherever that, those locations, and we have a big group of people, we could do that and share that information, because you are right, there are a lot of times, people are not going to come to us. We do need to go out there and reach out to the people. And I know there are some areas that could be kind of scary at times, but there are people who are willing to go along with you, you know, that know the neighborhoods, and they could help us, you know, get that information out, if there are important things that we really want the community to be aware of. And just, and be out there and be visible, because I think that's really important, that we are visible, because people do see us, and they know that we care. That, to me, is very, is a great idea.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher.
So that's a really great idea, and I know that our staff, different departments, attend different events in the community based on their area of expertise and what they might want the public to know. So are you suggesting that we do this?
I think, why not? Why, why, we are the board members. Why, I have no problem going any day to go anywhere, and if there's information that they have, that, I'm not saying we should have staff go to every single thing, and even if staff is doing it, why don't we tag along with them to assist them? And again, that's our presence, we're there, we care. We show people that we care, we're out there with them.
Yeah. So, and I really do think that to some degree, that is happening, but that is a really good idea, you know, because then the visibility is increased, and that goes along with the conversation, I think, that we had earlier about, you know, are we telling our story adequately, and does everybody really understand what it is that we're here to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Gittens.
And if you recall, I think it was our last meeting last week, and I announced that I was having a town hall in my district, and I did, and I did not do a major, you know, put it in Peachtree and on the website and all, because my purpose was just that, to get people to come and to have, like I told them, you've got more than three minutes to just, you know, to talk and to discuss. We shared thoughts and ideas, and they understood about some of the initiatives and things that we need to look at, and it was very good. And there was, it was not done through, you know, like I said, the district and all of that. It was just myself and a group of about 25 or 30 of my constituents, and we sat and actually just had a conversation. It was supposed to be an hour and a half, and it ended up two hours, but it was good, because people do get an opportunity. And I would suggest it, you know, to any of you, not making it, you know, a huge thing, but making it more personal for people, so they do feel heard.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
Ms. Gittens, I think that's great, because I know that you had, you did mention that to us, and I don't recall the date that, I know, I thought you were going to get back on the date, so I'm glad that you did have that, because it is like a listening tour, you know, when you are out there and you're listening to what your constituents have to say. And I think Ms. Patrica is also going to do that in her area as well. But I just think that, again, going back, you had 30-some people that, you know, you heard from, so hopefully at our meeting, you will share, you know, their thoughts and everything with us, if there's things that could improve, that we could help improve their lives or what they need. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
So yes, so I had down here at 6:18 Blessed Savior Church, community meeting.
Do we have a date?
That was it. I announced it.
I had 6:18, so that's June 18.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Oh, no, it was five. It was last Tuesday.
Oh, yeah. But I think those things are a good idea, and the other thing, I, because I have that group of grandkids and great-grandkids, I spend as much time as possible at the sports fields, and boy, do I get an earful all the time, and that's where those parents are, you know, several nights a week. So that's another good place to maybe to take some information and to entertain what, listening to what the community has to say, because those parents are very important contributors to the decisions that we make.
Thank you. So I would like to move on to the next one, as we are coming up on 3 o'clock, and we still have a couple of items to go. So the next area is Dimension Six, Strategic. As we look at Strategic, the lowest area was a 1.6. There are actually two of those. The first one, Board Devotes More Time in Preparing for the Future Than in Putting Out Fires. And the second one, number seven, the board makes explicit use of long-term priorities of the school district in dealing with current issues. The highest rated items were 3.7, and there were two of those as well. Number three, at least once a year, the board asks the superintendent to articulate his or vision for the school district's future and offer strategies to realize that vision. And number 10, the board is periodically advised of availability of outside funds, such as state and federal grants, special programs, community resources, research programs, and special construction funds. So in the area of Strategic, any comments? Mrs. Gittens.
Well, I'll just reiterate what I said earlier, that, and I know Ms. Fisher said that as we're presenting our group activities with the Strategic Plan, but just making sure that we are aware and relevant with our dealings with the Strategic Plan as things change in our community and in our world, are we keeping up with that?
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, I'd like to thank you for taking the time this afternoon to have the discussion around these different areas. I also want to take a consensus that our next steps would be that we will schedule a workshop where you will develop an action plan around each of these areas. So we'll start with that. Is there a consensus that you would like to hold another workshop to develop an action plan to improve your work around these different dimensions? If we could have a voice, and I'll start with Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
In general, yes, but you mean every single one that we talked about, that we focused on? Or are we going to prioritize?
You would decide that at your workshop. Like, we would look at each area, and is there an action that you believe needs to be taken to improve that area, and then we would come to consensus around that?
Yes, with prioritizing the most important ones.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Gittens.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Patrica, thank you. Okay, so we will schedule a workshop in the future to develop an action plan. So what I would like to do then is for each of you to look at those areas, and if you have specific suggestions for an action that you would like to see taken, for example, Ms. Patrica's suggestion around developing an action plan to increase legislative involvement, then if you would send that to me, then I will bring those forward as we come to that workshop, and then we can have discussion around what that plan would look like, and you would come to consensus upon the agreed-upon actions. Is that acceptable? I know that was a mouthful, wasn't it? That's acceptable? Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much. I know it's, you know, self-reflection is extremely valuable, but it's very difficult to do in a public setting, so I really appreciate the honest discussion that you've had here today. The next area of discussion is around your committees. As you may recall, it's been about a year and a half ago, we decided that you would change committee liaisons at the end, so that the new terms would go July to July. So that's what we're going to look at next. So this has each of the different committees listed, and you can see for the past two years who those liaisons have been. This is slightly different than the one that was posted, in that I hadn't noticed that the FSBA Board of Directors was a two-year term, and that that two years was not yet up, so I just copied and pasted that in there, so that term is not yet finished. So we begin with our board advisory committees, and the agreed-upon protocol from a couple of years ago was that the current person has the option of remaining the liaison for two years. If they choose not to do that, then they're welcome to change that, but they would have first refusal. Since Ms. Morgan has been with construction advisory only one year, I would begin with her and ask, do you want to continue for another year, or would you prefer to change committees?
I would prefer to continue for one year. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I will put your name right there. Ms. Gittens, you have been with Continuous Systemic Improvement for one year. Would you like to continue or change committees?
Well, I had, since I've been on the board, asked about doing finance, and each time I was denied. And since this is my last year, I would really like to have that opportunity.
I'll switch with you.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mrs. Jordan, so you're willing to not do a two-year term with finance, and Ms. Gittens can do that. Perfect. Thank you.
To do that, that's, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
And did you, would you like to take CSI, or do you prefer a different one, Mrs. Jordan?
I would love EDAC, no, just kidding. It doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter to me.
Then I'll come back to you when we see people who have, who choose to continue for two years or not, and then we'll come back to those who have an opening. Ms. Fisher, you are currently curriculum advisory. It's been your first year. Would you like to continue or change?
Well, since I was on it for three years earlier on, I would like to change if there's something available.
Okay, so that one would also be open. Mrs. Patrica, you were with DAC this year for the first year. Continue or change?
Continue, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mrs. Vaughn, Equity and Diversity, continue or change?
Sorry, Debbie.
That's okay.
I'd like to continue.
That's okay.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Giovinelli is not here. She is the current person for the Insurance Task Force. Has anyone spoken to her? Do you have any idea whether she would like to continue that? She's not made that note. Okay, so for now, I'm going to assume that she would like to continue and leave that one there, because I don't want to take that option away from her. So that leaves the CSI.
So, Ms. Fisher, you want to switch?
Curriculum.
You want to do the other one, and, I mean, I don't care, so.
Do CSI and you do curriculum?
That's, that's fine.
Okay, okay, so we'll put Ms. Fisher for, of course, it would help if I could spell.
Does that work for you?
And then we'll leave Mrs. Giovinelli. Thank you. So the next one is the Board Legislative Liaison for the State, Federal, and FSBA. It is a two-year term, but that, those two years are up. It had been Ms. Jordan and Mrs. Gittens as the alternate. So we have an opening there. Who would be interested in being that legislative liaison?
If nobody wants it, I will continue.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fisher, did you have a comment?
I'll be the alternate. I haven't done legislative.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The next one is Coalition for Drug-Free Southwest Florida. It's currently Mrs. Vaughn. Ms. Vaughn, would you like to continue or?
No.
Okay, so is there someone who would be interested in doing that one? Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah, I've been a member for 25 years, and I go anyway, so I'll continue.
Thank you.
Did you hear me? Shocker.
Thank you. The Head Start, Ms. Morgan, you are currently there. Would you like to continue or change?
Yes, I'd like to continue. Thank you.
Okay, the Horizon Council is the chair, the Independent Sales Tax Certex Oversight Committee. Ms. Gittens, would you like to continue or change?
Well, my question is, I know I was appointed to the, to be the audit liaison, and I don't know when and what that's going to be, so perhaps I should, you know, thinking, I don't know how much time or work that's going to be. So if there's someone else, I guess, that wants to do that.
Okay, thank you. Is someone else interested in being the liaison?
I mean, otherwise, I.
You have your hand up?
If nobody else will do it, I'll do it. It's only four times a year.
Whatever, it doesn't matter to me. I'm happy to do it. If you want to do it, go for it.
It doesn't matter to me, Ms. Morgan.
I mean, I.
Need to bring a coin toss.
Continue, I just don't know what.
Not if you're doing the audit.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morgan.
I was part of the group that passed the tax. It would be interesting to stay, you know, sit in on the thing and see how it goes. Not that I don't watch it, but.
Okay, thank you. The Instructional Calendar Committee. Ms. Patrica, would you like to continue?
Yes, please.
Learning for Life, Ms. Vaughn.
Can I ask something?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought that the only ones that, was the committees that were the two years, right? Am I mistaken?
I could be mistaken.
I was just.
It was my understanding that it was for all the positions. However, if there are, if there are people who would like to take a different committee and you want to have that discussion, certainly open to that.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Ms. Vaughn, Learning for Life?
Yes, I'll continue.
Thank you. School Health Advisory, Ms. Fisher.
Unless anyone else wants it, I'm happy to continue.
Any other interest? Ms. Fisher. The Lee County Fair, Ms. Jordan.
I can do it. I mean, it's just, all I do with that is just get the schools together for the fair. I mean, it's. I mean, it's like one meeting. So I'll be more than happy to do that. And Judge?
The Student Advisory Board. This is one that we need to have a little bit of discussion about, because I remember back when the first requirement for board advisories to have a physical quorum came about. There was discussion about not having the student board advisory be called a board advisory because they didn't want to have to meet that requirement. However, now that they're able to have a virtual quorum, is the, would the board like to continue to have that as an advisory board? And I will say that one, that some of the feedback I've received is that the students feel it's very important that, that they believe it's an advisor, a board advisory, but we'll open that for discussion. Ms. Patrica?
So I think that it's really important that staff facilitate that meeting, and that board members be there to listen. I think that we are big personalities who try to take over, and staff will allow it to be more student-led, if I'm making sense. Like, we had a meeting where board members had a discussion about the agenda. We should have just listened to students putting together the agenda. You know what I mean? So I don't have an issue with making sure, and I think we need to do a better job of this, making sure that a board member, at least one board member, is at each one of those meetings, but allowing staff to take over the conduct of the advisory committee itself. Am I making sense?
That's exactly what happened last.
Because that's, that's what our other advisory committees are. We don't run them. We meet with the chair, and we tell them what upcoming issues there might be, and then they decide by vote of the committee what goes on the next agenda, what staff they want to have there, whether they're going to make a recommendation to the board. I feel like the board is too involved in this committee.
Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Vaughn?
So, and I agree with that, and I think we also discussed the fact that it would not be a board advisory, but like a district student leadership committee. Still gives them the chance to share their concerns and their problem-solving ideas without being restricted by some of the requirements of the sunshine that we have for other advisories. And Attorney Bruno, we, did we, did we not think that that would be the best way to handle it? And, and I think staff has already agreed that they would facilitate from now on, and that we could be there, because it is a, an announced meeting, and we could be there and listen, and hear what the kids have to say, but that it's, it is a student-led thing. And, and it's, so I agree with that.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Patrica?
It says all board members, but I know for the last several meetings, we've had different board members just say hello, like the introduction. So if I might suggest that we could just kind of rotate one person that, yes, you're going to go, and then everybody's welcome to go and, and listen and participate, but that we have one person that will absolutely definitely be there. Because I think, I've been to meetings where there's like three board members, and I remember some in the past, it had like five or six board members, so heaven forbid that we should have one work, all of us think everybody else is going and nobody goes.
So someone who would schedule the representative for that month?
Yeah, just, just on a.
So it'd be a schedule, a rotating schedule, perhaps by district, or?
I don't know. What do y'all think about it?
I had brought that up last week, so.
Ms. Patrica?
Do the right thing.
Correct.
Once a month, each of us is assigned to do the right thing. The other thing I wanted to ask you, Ms. McClung, did I hear you say the students think it's important for it to remain a board advisory committee?
That's the information I've received, yes.
So I don't know how we, I mean, I think we need to turn it over to staff and let them run it, just like we do our other advisory committees, but I don't know how we not allow this to continue to be a board advisory committee if the students want it to be.
So let's remember why we had this discussion. It was because of the virtual, so now that we know that the law's coming, and that we can have board advisory meetings virtually, and still meet our quorum requirement and conduct business, then there's really no reason why the Student Advisory Committee can't stay a board committee.
And that, so that begs the question, should, should that be up under, should that be one of our seven committees? Because when I think about DAC, for example, almost every item that was discussed this year led to immediate items of action by staff. Staff was able to address the concerns that were raised, and I don't know that they're bringing any formal recommendations forward to the board this year. That being said, they've been very, very effective. So should student advisory be a board advisory committee, and then Insurance Task Force gets moved down to below? That way, one board member is consistently there each and every month. That's our assignment. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there as an idea, as a thought.
Surround that suggestion. Ms. Jordan?
I personally, because I've gone, like, to all of them, I just think that it is important that as many of us that are there are there, because to them, to the students, they really like the fact that we're there and that we are listening to them. The last meeting, our, the new president of the advisory, student advisory, she did a great job in leading it, and Mary Lynn, who is staff, assisted her, but she did a great job. Their parliamentarian was there. He was on target. You know, Ms. Roman was there to assist in the, making sure that we heard from all the kids that were on the other end. I, I think that it worked, and then, of course, Ms. Vaughn welcomed, last, the month before, it was Ms. Morgan who welcomed them. And I, I know I'm all over the place, because when there's kids, that's the way I am, and so I can't apologize for that. But I, I just think that we need to, they're going to get it straight. I mean, there's a good group of kids. They are coming up with their agendas, their ideals of what they want to hear, and they're working with Mary Lynn and Ms. Roman to keep all the information flowing. I, I think we need to just let it, let it go, and let all the members be a part of it.
Other comments? Mrs. Gittens?
Yeah, I had brought this up a few weeks ago. I don't know if anyone recalls, because I did say that I believe we should have assignments, just like, like do the right thing, so that no one has a question about when they're supposed to do the introduction, or what they're supposed to do, so.
So it appears that there is a consensus that the board would like for staff to, to run this meeting. I, I would like to have the opportunity to speak with staff, because this, you know, this is a new task for them. And I know you don't want to impact staff work when you don't need to. And, and I also know that that department right now has a lot of additional work because of the mental health responsibilities that have come on board since the pandemic. So I, I know that, that they will do everything in their power, you know, to do what you would like them to do, but I'm not comfortable assigning them a new role without having that discussion first. So Ms. Jordan, and then Ms. Fisher?
I was just going to say, it's not new to them. Mary Lynn has been a part of it for, I think, the last, at least, I know last year, the whole entire last year, even maybe longer. So she is, she knows how it flows at one night, and she just does it.
But have they been responsible for it, though, or have they just been assisting the board?
They, she's, she's there, and she kind of, she's been running it, and Ms. Fisher can speak on it more.
So we've had the Student Advisory Board for six years, and for about the first three and a half years, we really didn't have staff there. And, and it was student-led, and board members were there. About two years ago, I had, had a conversation with Lori Brooks, and she kind of assigned Ms. Rodriguez to the Student Advisory Board. And she is, she feels like that's her committee now, and she has been preparing the presentations and working with the board, the committee chair. And so now that we have the clarification from Attorney Bruno that we, they can have the virtual meetings, we have approximately a third of our kids are attending virtually, and the others are coming in person, because they like it that way. And Ms. Rodriguez is the facilitator officially right now, and, and Ms. Roman has been amazingly wonderful and involved also with keeping things in order. So as far as the assignment of the staff liaison, that's been, that's been done and approved.
Okay, then I will speak with them. In terms of other board advisories, generally, there is a secretary who is assigned that comes, does the recording, takes the minutes, and does that, is that, and in the past, that was Susan Johnson. So is that to be Ms. Roman?
They have their own minutes. They take their own minutes.
Yes, we have a secretary who takes the minutes, but then works with Ms. Roman. And I, I mean, I don't know. Ms. Roman volunteered to come and has been coming, so I'll let her.
But the students would not be able to post those minutes, so there would be someone that would need to be in charge of making sure that any, any notes were transcribed, that those got posted to the website.
And, and historically, that has been Ms. Johnson. And so they are used to sending the minutes to the board office.
So that would be Ms. Roman, then? Thank you. Okay. And so now let me clarify, rather than have one member, you would like a rotation schedule developed. Is this correct? Ms. Gittens?
No, I was.
Oh, that was an, okay.
Yes, that's what I asked.
If we could have, if we could just have a, a voice to make sure everyone, or actually, since Mrs. Gittens, Mrs. Giovinelli's not on the phone, we can do a, a hands-up. Is everyone in agreement for that? Okay, thank you.
Could I ask, ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In all the other advisories, usually, once a month, the, the chairperson and the staff liaison and the board liaison get together to put their heads together on making sure everything is working in terms of the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Has that been done in the, in the past? I'm, I'm looking toward Ms. Fisher, because I know she's been really involved, but I would like to see it spread out a little bit more. And I'm, I'm not sure how efficient it's going to be with the rotation, even though I like the idea of the rotation. Just wanted to put that out there. What would be the role of the board liaison? Would she be meeting with the staff liaison and the student chair?
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Fisher, you want to respond?
Yeah, so just automatically, I've been contacted by staff, you know, regarding the agenda, so I've been working with the chair and Ms. Roman and Mrs. Rodriguez, who, you know, she's actually setting the agenda with Ms. Roman. And we're, if we have a staff presentation, that has already been selected by the kids. There's a list. So then we arrange that as staff is available. And then I, I like the idea of a rotation by board members to do a welcome and be more directly involved, and letting any other board members who wish to attend to come and attend and hear the kids, because, like you said, the students like that, and I think that information that we gather is invaluable.
Okay, thank you. Hey, any other comments around this committee? Thank you.
Ms. McClung, can we jump to the last item? I have to leave.
Absolutely.
Please.
Yes, so the Estero Education Committee. Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yes, please, okay. I know that became official this past year, so we will put you on for your second year.
Good to go?
Can I ask a question, please? That one that's down here, the one that, for Ms. Patrica?
Yes.
Is the Lehigh one, should that one be on here as well, or?
No, it's a separate one. It's not through the district.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
It's not, it's not a district-led, it's a community-led. We don't have an MOU. We just, that's why we're a co-op, rather than a, than with an MOU.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to back up for just a moment to clarify. Ms. Fisher, did you say that the chair of the student committee adjusts, or finalizes the agenda with Mrs. Roman?
And, and Ms. Rodriguez.
And Ms. Rodriguez, okay.
And I'm happy to help for the, you know, the remainder of this year.
But it's not, it's the, the student advisory chair?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Oh, yeah, I guess I should clarify that, because that could look like you, couldn't it?
I don't want any mistake.
One, one other thing?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm wondering, then, if, starting in, in the new year, if the Person of the Month should also meet with Ms. Roman and, and Ms. Rodriguez and the chair, just so that she knows what to expect.
What's coming up?
And maybe even can contribute something to the, to the agenda.
That makes sense. Is there a comment, or?
No, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
So we can rotate the welcome and the direct involvement, and, and then anyone else who wants to attend can.
Everyone in agreement with that? If we could see a quick show of hands?
Sure.
Ms. Gittens, thank you.
Can we say it out loud, please? I think we had.
Yes.
Say it short.
Okay. Ms. Vaughn?
We just said.
And Ms. Morgan just said yes. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher? Yes, thank you. Okay, so we have agreement on that. Okay, the, the next one is the Strategic Planning Steering Committee, which did not meet this year. So you would like to continue? Thank you.
That's what I wanted to.
Where are we at?
We are on Strategic Planning Steering Committee, right below the Student Board Advisory.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The Foundation is the chair, so that would be Ms. Jordan. The next one is the Uncommon Friends Governing Board. Ms. Giovinelli has been there for two years. Is there someone else who would be interested in participating?
I think Mrs. Giovinelli might want to keep that, because she's a member of the Uncommon Friends Board, anyway.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
She doesn't want to do it, I will definitely do that.
Okay, so we will check with her and, and make that decision based upon her response, then. Although she has had it for two years, so technically, there should be, someone else should have that opportunity. So if you would, if you would like to do it, we can put you down. She's a board member, I mean, if she's a member, she could still attend the meetings, obviously.
She's a board member because of, she's a board member from here. That's how, she's a board member there.
Oh, because she's been on it several years.
Yeah, because she's been on with us.
Okay.
But, yeah, I would love to do it.
Okay, and Ms. Gittens, do you have a comment?
No, I, I'm interested in Value Adjustment Board.
Okay. Ms. Jordan, I'm going to put you here for the time being, and we can have that conversation to be short. Okay, Value Adjustment Board, that has been one, that position's been there for one year, so Ms. Morgan and Ms. Patrica would have right of first refusal?
If you want it, that's fine.
I would like to, just to broaden my horizons.
Okay, thank you. And we'll need to check with the alternate. If Ms. Patrica would like to continue as an alternate, we can ask her that. Otherwise, Ms. Morgan, would you be interested? Okay, so one of you would be the, the alternate. The other item around the Value Adjustment Board is there is a citizen member that the board would need to approve at your board meeting tomorrow evening, and I did not write down his name.
Charles.
Charles Guttenkust.
Thank you.
And what is it about? I didn't understand.
He is a citizen member that is put forward by the, that is approved by the board, and the Value Adjustment Board meets in June, so they wanted to be sure that, that the board had approved his nomination moving forward tomorrow evening, so that they could contact him for the June meeting.
And who suggests?
He's been on that board for, geez, forever?
Eleven years I've been on the board. No, I thought he was appointed the first year I came on the board, because I remember the process. Then maybe 10 years, yeah, but he's been on it ever since. He's been a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. Does anyone have any concerns about that going forward tomorrow evening?
No.
Okay, thank you. And then I believe that takes care of all, yes, that's all of the committees. So thank you very much. We will get that out to you. I will finalize this. I'll check with Ms. Patrica and Ms. and Ms. Giovinelli about those two areas, and then finalize it and send it. finalize it and send it out to you. Thank you. So our final item for today is the Board Protocol Manual. There were several revisions that have been brought forward.
Ms. McLennan?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fisher, have.
I'm sorry. I had one question regarding Horizon Council and the foundation.
Yes.
Yes, so at the time when we do our reorg in November, we need to make sure that we
change it.
Change it with them, because otherwise, they still think the chair is on it.
Thank you for that reminder. Yes, thank you. So if you look at your copy of the Board Protocol Manual, the items that are in a lighter blue, the links are also in blue, but these are in a slightly different color, blue, you'll notice. These are items that have been suggested but have not yet been agreed upon. And the last time we brought, I'm sorry, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, on page one, that needs to be changed, because it should be Lizette Roman. Please, and thank you.
You're welcome, yes.
Instead of Latanya?
No, instead of Mary.
Instead of Mary, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that catch.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to make that as a track changes, so let me just highlight that one, so I don't forget, and then I can track changes. So if we go down, it's in the standard reply section.
Page six.
Thank you, on page six, standard email reply.
Page six.
In the, in the blue, the piece that was added was on behalf of the board. So this was if a board member receives an email requiring a response, and it's related to the business of the district, it's not to, something specific to your area of concern, then the standard response would be to thank the person for the email and let them know that you are replying on behalf of the board, copying the superintendent, and then you're also copying the other board members, so that everyone is aware of the matter. So let's start with that one. Mrs. Gittens?
Well, the question I have, I agree that this is the standard response, but sometimes we, through, you know, our emails receive, we, we see this as well, and we can still, as individuals, respond as we see fit.
Yes. Yes, I, I think that that discussion the last time was that, even though you're replying on behalf of the, putting that piece on behalf of the board, because you're copying everyone else, they will see it. If they choose to go ahead and respond as well, they are certainly welcome to, but this way, everyone would know that it had been responded to, so that there wasn't a question as to whether it had, a response had been sent. Any other discussion on that one? Okay, if I could just have a quick show of hands in agreement to that one? I'm sorry, we had a request for voice, so.
Are we being, we are being filmed, correct?
Yes, but we had been asked this before.
I thought when people were not in the back room, right? I was just trying to figure out why.
Because, I don't know. You can't see everybody on video.
Know that.
No, you can't.
They can't.
Yeah.
Ms. Morgan, could you please?
And your beautiful mask.
So we will ask for a, a voice, and we've, we've heard a yes from Ms. Morgan, a yes from Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think you considered Giavonelli either.
No.
The next part is if a member receives an email that is not copied to all board members, and it relates to board business, but does not require the superintendent's attention, the board member may choose to forward the email to the board chair, or his or her designee for a response, or may personally respond to the email with a copy to all board members. Discussion about that passage. Okay, if we can have a voice, a vote on that, Mrs. Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, so we'll make that change as well. Okay, we'll move down to the next one. This one is on page 10, under the workshops. The piece that has been added is that, the review and prioritize future workshop topics, which now takes place in a workshop once a month.
It's on 11, actually.
Oh, sorry, it's on 10 on mine, so I may, I may not have, there may be one that's up a little bit. Agreement with that one, Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
I just have one, it's a yes, but, and then I have a comment about it, so.
Okay, let's get the, the rest of the vote, or the consensus. Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Gittens, your comment?
My only concern about the list of workshop topics, that it should be ongoing. The one that we have now started at a certain date, and everything prior to that was not visible.
They are there. I, I believe someone asked this last time, and I opened it and showed you that those columns were just hidden, but, so that you could see the ones that you needed to vote, to come to consensus on that day. But they are all there, we have not made any disappear, it's just a matter of unhiding those rows.
Right, and I, and I'm not saying that anyone did anything wrong, I'm saying when I looked at it, it still only started from a certain time. I don't, I'll talk with you offline.
Sure, and I'll go in and make sure that they are unhidden again on that sheet as well. Thank you. Okay, so go ahead and switch this. Thank you, the next one is, is just related to that same item about the workshop topics, and it's this description of how that takes place. The topics are requested by board members, will be added to the parking lot list, it's kept on the Google Sheet that can be board, viewed by board members, and then monthly, you'll be asked to come to consensus upon the topics and to prioritize, prioritize agreed upon items. Any questions around that? Okay, thank you. Agreement, Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan? Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. I understand it gets monotonous doing it this way, but at least we're sure that everyone is in agreement as we go through. The next part is presentations during board member comments. This was brought forward by the Communications Department, and they are asking that you consider adding this protocol. When the board, when board members have presentations or pictures that they would like shown during their comments, the, it would be very helpful to the communications staff if this process is followed. This gives them time to be sure that they are able to have everything up and ready in a timely manner. Ms. Jordan?
I don't know, when I looked at this, I was like, what the heck is this? Because it looks like, in what, I can come in, and in one hour, I can go, say, here you go, drop it, and it's going to be done. And then if we all want to do PowerPoints now, we could do a PowerPoint, they'll give us the, the little machine to hit the slides with. I, I don't know, I, I thought when they were speaking about doing some type of protocol for items to go back, this is not what I was expecting.
That's a different topic, I believe.
I don't even know what this is.
This, this, this procedure was brought forward because there were several times that board members have asked for presentations or pictures to be displayed during their comments, and staff didn't have prior notification, and it was very difficult for them to get things done, and sometimes resulted in a delay, as people were waiting for things to come up. And they just asked that this be considered, so that they would be prepared and everything would run smoothly.
Well, it used to be, if I may, it used to be when, if we had photos or something that we wanted to share, we gave it to Ms. Johnson at the time, and then from there, we gave it to her, not the day of, you know, a couple days in advance, we'd give her whatever we were looking at, or whatever we needed, if it was a photo or something to share, and then she would then take that and then give it to the appropriate people. We were not, you know, dealing with staff, or, you know, recommending that they do any of this for us, and it was simple. You know, so I, I don't know where this is all coming from.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
I, I think, when you understand this, this is actually simpler, more simple than the previ, no, you cut out one person. You basically just take your, your pictures and drop them in this folder. Now, can I ask the location? Will this be like on the desktop or something? That, where can we find it? Because that would be helpful.
If you look up here, I can show you, on everyone's computer in district staff.
Yeah, no, I see the link, I'm just saying, where will it?
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, if you, if you look on your screen, over in the box, see the little windows on the left-hand side? If you do a click on that, and you go to department links, and it is right there, that's where it is.
Okay, and that's very simple, that if we have a picture, we just click on there and put it in there. We're not including the secretaries or anyone else, and they've got it. So that's why I think it's, it's good, it's simple.
Ms. Jordan?
So then, what's the timeframe? So it's an hour before, and so if all seven of us decide to do a presentation during our comments, that...
But how often does that really happen? I mean...
I don't know.
If they, if they feel that they can handle it within an hour before, and it's just a drop and drag, then I, I say we go by what they're saying. They know their capabilities. So if you have a picture, just drop it in the folder, and I'm sure they'll let us know if they can't, but.
And if you'll note, number four, if it's a video, they are asking for 24-hour notice.
All right. Okay, so, Ms. Fisher, do you know how to drop and drag?
I'll learn.
I got, I got this.
Well, you could also ask, it, under 1A, it also says that you could task a board secretary to do so.
I think it's time we all learn to drop and drag, or drag and drop.
That's, that's a personal question.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
Is, is there somewhere in our protocols that limits our time for board member comments? Like 10, is it 10 minutes?
During discussion, but not during the good-of-the-order comments.
So in other words?
Exactly.
All of us, it's kind of what Ms. Jordan said, if everybody decided, hey, it's time to...
I think they... Talking stick after 10 minutes.
Is that the, is that the talking stick, or the?
Yeah, I know.
Well, technically...
I'm asking a serious question here.
Yeah, but according...
You hand it over after 10 minutes.
But I, I agree that, that that would be a concern if everyone decided, but technically, right now, everyone could do that, and there would be no advance notice, and no one would know that it was coming. We're here, if you would have, at the very least, an hour's notice, and at the most, 24 hours' notice if it were a video, so at least staff would know, oh, all seven have something coming up, rather than right before the meeting, finding out, oh, all seven have something coming up. Ms. Gittens?
This is a question for Attorney Bruno. I do believe that there is not a time limit on board member comments.
So...
In the statute.
The general rule for Robert's Rules is 10 minutes, but there's nothing specific in your protocol or manual that specifically says, you know, a time limit for good-of-the-order or board member comments. There isn't anything. The board is free to discuss it and decide what you want to do with that.
Well, there's nothing in statute that limits the time that a board member can do that either.
Would be, this would be a Robert's Rules issue, and there's nothing that really dictates a time limitation on any of that, that really is up to the board's discretion.
Ms. Jordan?
Okay, if you can refer us back to the statute, and we can do it later, but I do know that there's a statute that says, and I, I don't think it limits the time, I mean, not that anybody's going to take an hour, but, anyway.
Ms. Jordan?
Okay, I am so sorry that I keep harping on this, but this is like driving me crazy, because any of us could decide what, I'm just like not feeling it today, so I'm going to do a presentation on whatever I want to do a presentation on, and put it up there. There's no criteria, there's no anything to prohibit us to, from putting anything on here as a presentation, or whatever, whatever the heck we want to do.
That's according to statute.
Where's the statute that says what we, what we're allowed to put on a presentation?
There's no limitation on what we can present. There's, statute says during that particular time, the board members can present whatever and talk about whatever they want to. We're not limited, and we can't do a, a policy that limits statute. Statute says it, so, I, I'll go back and refer to it, because I know I had it when I presented my, my PowerPoint presentation. I know it was an issue, but I, according to statute, I could do that. And I doubt very seriously if everyone's going to all of a sudden, one time, have seven PowerPoint presentations. I mean, if so, then I believe the communications would say this is going to be an issue, because we have seven.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan, and then Ms. Vaughn?
And Ms. Vaughn can go first, and then I'll speak.
Thank you.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with the statute on, on that. I would like to explore it. I just don't see a value for anybody, I, I know there's a watching audience at home, but to, to do a long presentation for any of us at the end of a meeting is just a, a little much. I, I think if, you know, maybe we can even, I don't want to use the word warning, that's the first word that came, to let the rest of the board know that we're going to present, we have something special that we want to present that's going to take more than 10 minutes. I, I think that might be just, in fairness, to, to the rest of the board. Anyway, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan?
No, Ms., Ms., the pre-Bruno has her hand up.
Thank you.
There, there is no statute that talks about good-of-the-order. Good-of-the-order is governed by Robert's Rules, and it's made for the board to be able to make their comments with regards to the business of the board, or even discipline or concerns that you have with other board members. That's the purpose of good-of-the-order. The board can set whatever parameters it wants with regards to what can be done during good-of-the-order. Now, with regards to presentations, you do have a board policy that discusses presentations as it relates to the public. If the public wants to come in to make a presentation, there is a process to do that. And I do believe it's also referred in your protocol manual in terms of presentations.
That is presentations, yes, from outside entities that the board is requesting. And this is specific to presentations by board members that, that Communications is requesting, that, that, basically, they're requesting that staff not be asked to develop a presentation at the last minute to, to need to be able to put things up. Ms. Gittens?
I think she...
Oh, I'm sorry, I need to go back to Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, so I, I would like to pose to the board that we discuss a 10-minute limit. I think 10 minutes is... I think 10 minutes is fair. I think if a board member needs more time, then the case needs to be made to the board that we need to set aside that time for that particular presentation or conversation.
Mrs. Gittens.
Okay, can we just cut to the chase? This is all about me doing a presentation at a meeting. I did not go on, I don't believe it was more than maybe 12 at the most, 15 minutes. So I know that this is being brought up because I did that. No one else has ever done it. And this is what I mean, going back to when we were evaluating ourselves. All of this discussion is because it was not acceptable by some board members. I am allowed to be able to speak, and honestly, when you listen to some of the board members that go on and on and on for 15, 20 minutes, and it was concise, it was there, I gave you a copy afterwards, I did not give a copy beforehand because I did not need it to be evaluated. It was something that I wanted to do. When you say "presentation," it's like I'm trying to sell something. I had information that I wanted to share. It wasn't grandstanding so I could do it in front of an audience. That was the time that I felt I could do it, because otherwise, there would have been some other caveat, well, you can't do this now. I really don't see the issue. Communications has gotten together and given us some guidelines and said, if you want to do this, then, you know, drop it in there. But I know this is all about saying that, you know, we don't want that to happen, and that's not right, and it's not fair. There was nothing wrong with me presenting information. When else am I supposed to do it? And if no one else wanted to do, if someone else wants to do it, that's up to them. But I do have, and I will find where I sent that, because I had spoken with Attorney Bruno about it beforehand, and there is a statute that talks about not interrupting board member during their comments. But I will find it and get it back to the group.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, did you want to...
No, Ms. Bruno, and I like to follow her lead, so...
Thank you.
So with regards to, again, board members being able to make comments, board members are able to make comments during their board member comments. That's what's considered good-of-the-order per Roberts Rules. There's nothing that's dictating how or what you can present, or how long. There's nothing to do that's in there that controls that. Now, the board can decide what they would like to do. That's within your parameter, and you can put it in your manual and your, your protocols. Is there a time that you feel is an adequate time to be able to make a presentation? Because what I'm hearing is that, you know, if somebody makes a presentation that, and I'm not saying that this is happening, but if that's 30 minutes or 40 minutes long during the good-of-the-order, is that necessarily what the rest of the board would like to do? So the question is, is there a time that you would like to put for that particular presentation? I think that's where you are in your discussion.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Jordan, Ms. Vaughn.
And that's what I put forward. I said to the board, can we have a conversation about setting a 10-minute limit on board member comment in our protocol, please?
Thank you. Ms. Jordan.
This has nothing to do with anybody except for me personally, because when I looked at, when I looked at this, other than the first thing I saw was Lizette's name was not on there, and I saw this, I was like, what is this about? Why would we even be doing something like this? Because to me, seriously, again, I go back to, this could be, where's the parameters of what can be shown? Where does it even state that at?
Okay, I believe we have two separate issues.
I don't see that here.
So the first issue that involved around the protocol is if you are going to make a presentation, then this would help communication staff. The second issue that has been brought forward is a suggestion to limit the time of good-of-the-order comments per board member. So, Ms. Vaughn, just one sec. If we could take, because I think this one is secondary to the first one, so if we could take the first question and, and address whether or not you wish to set a time limit, and then we'll move to, if there is a time limit, then we'll move to what is the protocol in terms of preparing presentations for, to help communication staff with that, with that preparation. Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, I was just going to say, I support what Ms. Morgan said, and it wouldn't be limited to presentations. It's, and I know there've been people, and I may have been guilty myself, that have gone on for more than 10 minutes, and it wasn't a presentation. I think if someone does have a special video or presentation that's going to take more than the 10 minutes, we can do, it's kind of like when you ask for board indulgence on anything else, but I would like to see just overall 10 minutes for each comments, good-of-the-order comments.
Ms. Fisher, we have not heard from you. Do you have a comment?
Are we talking about good-of-the-order or board member comments?
Well, board member comments fall under good-of-the-order, so we're talking about total time, I believe.
Okay. I go with the 10 minutes.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan, did you have any other comments?
If we're just speaking about time, I would say 10 minutes, because the other, I don't like...
Yeah, we'll come back to that one. Okay. Ms. Gittens.
Well, I just have an issue with, I mean, I agree that some times it goes on too long. I have angst about saying you can only speak this much, and you can, it's just too regimented for me. So I, I don't know. I don't know. Whatever, everybody decides, because that's...
Thank you. Attorney DePree Bruno?
So I do want to make sure that it's clear, we're talking about good-of-the-order, because your protocol manual also talks about formal presentations. If you want to make a formal presentation to the board as part of the agenda, you're able to do so as well, and there is a process to do that.
Ms. Gittens.
Okay. What falls in a formal presentation as comments that you want to make? I just feel we're policing ourselves so much and putting everything in a little box. You can only do this for 10 minutes, and it has to be about this, 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 and this. It's just an issue to me. I mean, anyway.
Attorney DePree Bruno, I just wanted to clarify, are you referring to the board member request for board presentation in the protocol? So I have that up on the screen right now. On my copy, it is on page 16, where a board member requesting a formal presentation to the school board at a regular meeting briefing or workshop shall submit a written request to the superintendent for consideration. And this is, needs to be put in 12 days in advance. And normally, this is for an outside presentation, from an outside vendor, not from an internal or a board member. So I don't know that this specifically addresses if a board member would like to make a presentation. However, if a board member has a group that they would like the board to receive a presentation from, then they would go through that process. So if we could go back to a consensus around the time limit of 10 minutes per board member for good-of-the-order board comments. Mrs. Gittens.
I think, I mean, we're missing at least two people. I think this is very important, that we should do this when we have a full board here. It's not something urgent. I don't have a presentation I'm going to be making, so, and I agree with you. This item that you put up there is about outside people coming in, presenting to the board, because I asked about that with the students coming in to present about their take on the LGBTQ and the poster. And that's the, the information they said 12 days before, and the superintendent has to agree. The superintendent does not decide whether or not I, a board member, can speak about something, so that does not apply to me.
Yes, ma'am. So there is a suggestion that we postpone the timeline discussion until the full board has an opportunity to weigh in. Is there agreement on that?
Yes.
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 Ms. Gittens, yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So we will, we will postpone that. I'm going to come back to the protocol discussion around the process, regardless of whether there's a 10-minute limit, because this presentation may take two minutes. And I should clarify that when, when Communications Department refers to presentations, that means basically anything from a picture that is popped up while a board member is speaking to a full-blown PowerPoint presentation. So what they're asking for is consideration of their staff time and letting the staff know in advance that if you, you know, if you have a picture or two, that you've been out to school visits, or been to an event, and you would like to put those pictures, then you would put them into the folder in a PowerPoint so that they could be easily brought up. If you had a full PowerPoint presentation, it would be the same. If you have a video, they are asking for 24 hours' notice if you have, have a full presentation or a video, so that they just have time to make sure that everything is working properly, if it has sound, that the sound can be heard. Because you may recall, the past six months or so, we've had several incidents where we weren't able to get the sound up, or where we were waiting for a presentation or a picture to be brought up, and they would just like to streamline that process. Comments around that? Ms. Jordan.
I'm sorry, I'm going to keep on saying this. I have no problem with dropping photos, slide and drop, or whatever that is, but I still believe that we have to, there is nothing there regarding the, and I know, presentation is supposed to encompass everything, but what, what can we and what can we not do on there? And I think that that should be, I just think we're leaving ourselves open to whatever.
Well, I don't think that Communications would set any type of parameters around what you can or cannot do in terms of the content. What they're asking for is just whatever that content might be, that you, that you follow this process for, for making it available to them. Mrs. Gittens.
I just feel that it's out of order to try to govern what a board member comes, can, can say. If I, you know, went to a school and they were doing, you know, acrobatics, and some people thought, oh, you know, you can't show acrobatics because, you know, their skirt goes up, then someone is going to say to me, I can't show that? How are we governing each other to say what I want to present and what you want to present? I just, I really don't understand your concern over just dropping pictures or dropping what it is we want to say.
Ms. Fisher.
So during the board business meeting, during our time, according to Roberts Rules, we are not censored. We can say, give whatever message we can. In the past, we have, some of us have provided pictures and/or a video, and I think all that's happening here is they're saying, get it to us in advance, an hour advance for pictures and 24 hours for a video. And we have our board secretaries who can assist us with that.
Exactly.
And as far as the content, I don't see that there's any, and Attorney Bruno, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see where there is any kind of censorship or restrictions on what we can present. I mean, we haven't ever presented anything inappropriate before, so I think this is a simple thing. It's just a courtesy to our staff so that they can be well-prepared.
Yes, ma'am. There is nothing in here related to the type of content. That would be a whole different discussion. Any other comments? Okay, is there agreement to this process to be added to your protocol in terms of providing information to the communication staff in advance? Ms. Morgan? Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
The communications process?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Okay, so we have a four to one. So for now, I will put this in protocol. I know we do have two members who are not here, however, it would still, it would be at most a four-three. Thank you.
Is this not something that we would want the rest of the other ones who are not here to speak on? Is this not as important as the time?
We can certainly, in fact, if...
If we're doing the time, why would we not have the other two members speak on this as well?
We, we could, I'm looking to see, I believe there might only be one more area at all that's in there. So if the board would like, we could postpone, I believe that was the last, that might even be the last one, the last change. If the board would like, we could bring both of those items back when the full board is here, so that everyone has plenty of time to discuss that. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, did you have a question, or were you just raising an agreement?
No, I'm just wondering where you're talking about now.
I'm looking, I'm just scrolling, I believe that was the last change. I was just double-checking. Yeah, because the rest, yeah. So that was the last change in the protocol to be agreed upon. So the recommendation or the suggestion is that rather than, and going ahead and accepting that, that we wait and bring that back into the discussion at the same time the board discusses the time limits.
You have on page 21, under orientation, new members, is that section in blue?
Not in it.
Is that blue because it's URL, or is that blue because it's an addition?
Those are all links. Yeah, those are, those are all links, so they're not new.
Links that were there previously.
Yes, those were already there.
Okay. So the only thing you're asking us now, I'm sorry, is to vote on...
I'm asking you to, to postpone agreement upon that communications process until the full board is here, and we would carry on the discussion around the communications process and the time limit for good-of-the-order comments when all board members are available to make that decision.
And what will we do in the interim?
In the interim, if you choose to bring forward a presentation, it would be much appreciated by staff if you would give them advance notice in that. However, it would not be part of protocol, so it would not be a requirement, but they would certainly appreciate it if you would do that. Is there agreement to postpone this until the full board is here? Ms. Morgan?
Because, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Ms...
Does this come back to us again, or this is it?
Well, if you postponed it, it will come back one more time.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. So with the exception of this particular protocol around the communications, the rest of the changes were agreed upon. We will come back for discussion with this particular piece, and also a discussion of whether you wish to add a time limit on good-of-the-order board comments to your protocol. With that, those are all the items that I have for this afternoon, so I, yes, Ms. Vaughn?
The last part of this are job descriptions.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that's not anything we're going to review at this point, but I know, especially moving forward, we're going to be talking about the superintendent's job description. What is that?
My recommendation would be that that would be facilitated by HR as they, as they are the ones that update job descriptions. I'd be happy to help in any way necessary, but they would be the ones that would be making any actual changes. So I would suggest that we put that on the workshop topics and bring that forward.
If it's, if it's not already on there, that we, that we do that. Notice, we also have, even though... If it's not already on there, that we do that. Notice, we also have, even though, I mean, the board secretaries, the executive assistants are also office manager, those things are on there, even though they're not our employees, only the --
Ms. Vaughn, where are you at, please? What page?
She said job descriptions.
I'm just scrolling through the very end of this, 46. I mean, there are a lot of job descriptions here that are part of this.
And my understanding that is although the secretaries are technically superintendent's employees, that their job descriptions were in here because they do work so closely with the board members.
Yeah, and that makes sense because we don't want to be abusing what --
The expectations around that job, yes. And if there are comments, you know, if you believe that those need to be changed as well, we can certainly add that to that parking lot item. So right now, I have the superintendent's job description. Would you also like to look at office manager and/or executive secretary position to make input into that?
I'd like to entertain that, and maybe it would be particularly appropriate. We're going to be looking at -- I asked Ms. DePree Bruno, we're going to be looking at the scope of work for RSM. And so it's like that part, because the auditors on there, too, may mesh with job descriptions, so.
Okay, thank you. I'll add those items to the parking lot.
Okay.
Mrs. Gittens.
Yes, can we please, on page 75, starts the board's self-evaluation. I don't know where you would note it, but I would like to add that to be the same instrument as our evaluations of our employees.
So I'll also add that to the parking lot. Okay, thank you. Any other things that people would like added to the parking lot? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and I'll turn it back over to Chair Jordan.
Thank you, Ms. McClung. Really appreciate all what you do for us. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
And right now, so we have good-of-the-order. Ms. Morgan, I'm going to start with you.
No. I don't -- no, thank you. I don't have good-of-the-order. You may start with me.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Has that 10-minute limit started yet? That's just a joke.
It started at 5:00.
It's just a joke.
You are 5:00.
It started at 4:00.
Start it. I'm just saying.
No, I have nothing for this meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens, go.
Okay. I was waiting for you to say my name. Anyway, I -- the only thing, I just keep looking at these, the evaluation instruments that we use for our employees, and a thought just came to mind that for the superintendent search, that we look at this particular instrument that we have for the superintendent and somehow be able to infuse that with the questions and things that we're doing, because this is more in keeping with what we're looking at, I think. And the company or whoever we choose, I'm sure will be able to help with that. But I really would like to see in that selection process either using this and shortening it or whatever, but whoever comes on board, this is what we evaluate them with, so I don't know why we wouldn't use a similar instrument in what we're doing to select them.
Great idea.
And I don't know if that goes on the -- where it goes, parking lot or whatever.
We'll just bring it up with her when we're talking about the -- okay. Did you have anything else?
I'm done for now.
Ms. Fisher?
I have nothing for good-of-the-order this afternoon. Thank you all.
And what I have to say is I thank you, thank you, thank you so much for working so hard over the weekend and getting all of that done. Thank you to the staff for all the time that they took over the weekend and making sure that we had everything that we needed in order to do what we had to do this morning. So I just cannot thank you enough for that. And seeing that there's -- oh, sorry. Ms. DePree Bruno, did you have anything to share? Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Prophet and all of our police, everybody out there. Thank you. Thank you for the people who came here. Everybody have a blessed day, and we will -- this meeting is adjourned, and we will see you tomorrow.